And welcome to the March 17th meeting of the Auburn School Committee. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, undivisible, indivisible, just as our own.
Let's begin with introductions down here to my right, please.
And at large, on that, Ward four.
Pam Hart, Ward two.
Karen Matthew, Ward three.
Connie Brown, Superintendent of Schools.
Faith Fontaine, at large.
Jan Poyshawn, Ward five.
Brian Carrier, Mayor's Representative.
Abigail Faucher, Student Representative.
All right, and Corinne McWigan has an excused absence for this evening. All right, we're going to begin this evening with a budget workshop going over cost centers eight and nine, which are maintenance and transportation. The regular meeting will follow. Thank you very much. So at this time, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Hunter, Mr. Hanson, to talk about the transportation and facilities.
What's that?
Faith Fontaine, at large.
Well, happy Saint Patrick's Day, everybody. And we'll start off the cost centers eight, of eight, nine, are transportation facilities and maintenance. The Auburn Transportation Fleet consists of thirty-eight buses, twenty-four of which are your to and from school. They have fourteen spare buses. We purchased four new buses in FY '21, two were general fund, and two were CRF funds. All daily buses are 2016 or newer, so we have a fairly new fleet, in good shape. No bus purchase requests in FY '22 budget this year. That, thirty-eight buses, thirty-four were conventional buses, seventy-seven passengers. Four of those have wheelchair lifts. One transit, which is a little bit larger, that flat-nosed bus that you sometimes see that does a lot of trips. It has a lot of storage underneath, so that's why we have that. Three mini buses, and all three of those have wheelchair lifts also. Of those buses, nine of them are gasoline-powered buses, twenty-one are propane-powered, and eight are still diesels. The eight diesels are the oldest ones that we're trying to work our way out of. Our van fleet, we have five eight-passenger vans, we have eight seven-passenger vans. We purchased four student transportation vans from the CRF money. Vans have historically been purchased through our CIP.
We're trying to get the feedback that you can hear yourself speaking from the other room taking care of everything. We hear you twice.
So Auburn Transportation staff, there's a Director of Support, excuse me, Director of Support Services, which is point five, you'll see that come up again on the cost center nine, which is maintenance. We have a Transportation Manager, we have an Admin Assistant, which is the same as the Director, that you'll see that one come up again, as another halftime position there in maintenance. Twenty-four bus drivers, seventeen of those are to and from school. One trip bus driver, six special education drivers. Four special education van drivers, six special ed transportation aides, one point five mechanics, which is a reduction of point five for, from this year. Bus driver subs budget is eleven thousand, added to the budget due to the new earned paid leave law. So our total salary and benefit budget is one million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six. Auburn Transportation non-staffing costs, professional services, four thousand, four hundred dollars. Those are physicals and the random drug testing that we have to be part of for the drivers. Software is seventeen thousand, eight seventy-nine, which is our Verizon GPS program that's in every one of our buses, including the maintenance fleet. And trip scheduling software. Our insurance costs are seventy-four thousand, five twenty-two. Repair and maintenance on those vehicles is budgeted at ninety-three thousand, five eighteen. Contracted vehicle repairs and supplies. Travel is two thousand, five hundred dollars. That's primarily the EZ Pass account when we go out of town. The tire account is twenty-two thousand, nine twenty. Office supplies is four thousand, eight hundred. Fuel is one thousand, three hundred, uh, one hundred and thirty thousand, six oh four. And contracted special education slash homeless budget is one hundred and five thousand, five hundred. Staff recognition is four hundred dollars. Total non-salary slash benefit costs is four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, forty-four dollars. Cost Center eight total budget is one million, seven hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. An increase of fifty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars, or three point three, nine percent. And part of that is the Director's salary, half of that's Director's salary going into there.
Just to add to that, you, we talked about last week that some of the principals and assistants were shifted. We also shifted part of Billy's Director's salary into transportation, just to be more accurate in where we're putting things. So that's sort of part of that, along the same lines, just to clarify, that's what that was about.
Do you pre-purchase the fuel? Like, you walked into a fuel price for the year? You are?
Yeah. Good. Both propane and, well propane and regular gasoline, we are. The diesel, we are not anymore because we use very little diesel. Those diesel buses are spare buses, so there's really no need to.
That's really good.
Mr. Hunter, when you talk about special ed transportation, is that contracting out to perhaps Bill Gordon? I'm just confused about special ed transportation. I need a little clarification on what that is.
Yes.
Yeah, there is some that is contracted out that we can't take care of in-house. I don't know if it's Bill Gordon, I'm not sure, we'll find out.
I just used him as an example, is that sort of, okay?
It would be that type of service, yes.
Okay, okay.
So cost Center nine, facilities and maintenance. The maintenance fleet consists of some trucks and vans. We have eight maintenance trucks with plows. Three of those are one-ton dump trucks with Sanders for the winter time. Are one-ton pickup trucks, and two of those have Sanders. So we have five Sanders in all to go around to the schools. We have one stakebody flatbed truck. We have three food service vans, and one is also used for mail delivery service. One of those were purchased with the CRF money this year. We have one IT cargo van, also purchased with CRF. And we have one sheer send-it cube truck, which was purchased through a grant. All maintenance vehicles have historically been purchased through the CIP. The rest of our equipment, we have three mowers, sweepers. By that we mean we can switch off the mowing deck, put on sweepers, and we sweep most of our campuses ourselves. We have two other mowers, we have one tractor backhoe. We have four trailers to haul the equipment around with, and we have three water cannons to water our athletic fields. Auburn Facility staff, there's the other half of the Director of Support Services. Administrative Assistant again is up there for point five. We have one working foreman, four utility staff, one of those is paid through the nutrition budget. Eight daytime custodians, one at each elementary school, and one at Auburn Middle School and at Edward Little High School. We also have three of our own evening custodians at Edward Little High School. Maintenance custodial overtime is twenty-six thousand, five hundred, which includes a good portion of the plowing and after-school coverage. Summer mowing and painting is forty-two thousand. We restored the painting that was cut from last year's budget back into this year's budget. Totally salary and benefit cost is one million, eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and twelve. Contract services and utilities, contracted custodial service at all the schools in the evening, and halftime at Franklin and at the ROTC building is five hundred and seventy-five thousand, six thirty-one. We also have some service contracts for our boiler and climate control systems, which is eighty-three thousand, nine eleven. We have a roof contract for maintenance, which is twenty-eight thousand, fifty. We have quarterly elevator inspections, which is six thousand, three hundred. Waste disposal and recycling is thirty-one thousand, ninety-seven. And our utilities of the water and sewage is eighty-four thousand, two sixty-four. Our natural gas is three twenty-eight, five eighty-four. A decrease of sixteen thousand, seven ninety-three, or four point eight, eight-six percent. Electricity is three hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven oh nine, a decrease of eight thousand, three oh one, or two, two point three-three percent. Propane and kerosene is twenty-three thousand, four ninety-one. All our facilities are on propane, except for we have one portable trailer at Auburn Middle School, which is an outside heating unit, which is keros, we use with kerosene.
I was just going to add, Mr. Simpson may ask, yes, we do lock in our electricity and natural gas. We bid those competitively. And that led to some of the savings you see, or the reduction from FY '21 to FY '22.
Thank you, because this time I was going to ask, how do you know? How do you know there's a decrease? Thank you.
So this is a little slide of our facility inspection programs that we have. All our vehicles are inspected weekly. Monthly, we have a program that inspects our exit lights, emergency lights, and all the fire extinguishers. We have a quarterly program, which is the sprinklers, elevators, air filters, and the AEDs. An annual inspection of the boilers, fuel tanks, fire alarms, intrusion alarms, the bleachers at two schools, three schools, gym divider curtains, basketball hardware, which is the basketball frames and hoops, surveillance cameras, and the fire hydrants. Repair, maintenance costs, construction projects, thirty thousand dollars. Custodial supplies, one hundred and three thousand, five dollars. Maintenance supplies, sixty thousand, one fifty-one. Fields and ground supplies slash maintenance is forty-seven, two forty, which also includes our playground chips that we put in the playgrounds. Repair and maintenance, two hundred and nineteen thousand, seven ninety-six. The heat, which includes the heat and boiler maintenance decreased by one, thirteen thousand, nine sixty-nine, or nine point three-four percent. Gas and maintenance, gasoline for the maintenance vehicles is ten thousand, two seventy. Ties and supplies and maintenance for the maintenance vehicles, fourteen thousand, eight seventy. There are no new security cameras coming this year, which is a decrease of twenty-four thousand, nine twenty-five.
Just a little bit more on that, we have a really good stock of spare parts. Right now, and our cameras are in good shape, so we thought there was no need to fund anything for next year. That may return in the future, however.
The Auburn Facilities other costs, insurance, seventy-four thousand, one twenty-nine. Facility software, sixteen thousand, two ninety. Work orders, which is workers and asset management. Postage fees is five thousand, eight hundred, and the telephone is forty-one thousand, nine sixty-four. Debt service, minor capital debt service is listed under cost Center nine, which is, includes the CIP projects, the revolving renovation funds, the QZF funds, the Siemens performance contracts, so a total minor capital debt service of one million, seven forty-eight, eight forty-three. Reduction of one hundred and nine thousand, five eighteen. Expiring debt is greater than the new CIP debt this year. Cost Center nine total budget, five million, seven thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars, which is a decrease of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six fifty, which is three point zero nine percent. And that is it.
Very nice, thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any questions for, for Mr. Hunter right now? Seeing none, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
You're welcome.
I think that brings us to the end of our cost centers as well, doesn't it?
It does, that, and if I might, I'd like to propose an amendment to the budget calendar. So you have a meeting scheduled for the 24th of March to talk about debt, all other areas such as crossing guards, adult ed, and revenue, and talking with Mr. Hanson. We don't think that's going to take a long time, probably no more than a half an hour. So what we'd like to do that evening is reserve the other hour and a half for your deliberation, determination of what figure you'd like to send to your public hearing, and cancel the March 31st budget meeting, if that's acceptable to the school committee.
Any opposition to canceling and condensing everything to March 24th? I think we're a go.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think we're okay, so that'll be a change on the agenda when we get to it in just a moment. All right, thank you again, oh, he's already gone, thank you, Billy. All right, moving along to the consent agenda. I do want to make one change to the consent agenda this evening. I'd like to use Chair prerogative to move item A under new business, which is the awarding of the contract for the new Edward Little High School. I would like to move that to just after public participation. The representatives from both the architect firm of Harriman, as well as the potential contractor, Mr. Art Dudley is sitting in the back here, they're here with us this evening, so hopefully there'll be no objection to that. So with that, can I entertain a motion for the approval of tonight's consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes from March 3rd, please?
Still moved.
Thank you, Faith, Brian, Mr. Carrier, I'll take your second. Any questions or comments about that?
Second.
All right, seeing none, all those in favor? None opposed, motion passes. All right, at this time, we are going to open the meeting up to public participation, and there is a chair and seat here available. Just a reminder that this portion of public participation is for any item that is not on the agenda right now. I will open up public comment on specific agenda items as we progress through the meeting. Do we have anyone in the community room who would like to come in and speak on public participation at this time? No one's moving? That's very difficult. Usually Shelley Monwa shares that, she's not, is she here tonight? Oh, you think she's in there? Are we all set? Okay, all right, we're going to close public participation. So let's move on to item, new business, A, the awarding of the contract for the new Edward Little High School. It has been a long time coming, and this, four years of planning and prep have brought us to this moment. So I would like to extend my many thanks to the Building Committee for their long hours of service that they've given and gotten us here to this point. So with that being said, we'll open the motion, we'll make the motions, have the discussion at that point. So can I entertain a motion to authorize the Superintendent of Schools to enter into a contract with Arthur C. Dudley in the amount of one hundred, four thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and three, one hundred and four million?
That was a deal. I was like, yes.
That was a great deal. Sorry, Mr. Dudley, I'm sure you had a minor heart attack over there. Let's back that one up. One hundred and four million, wow, I just got the taxpayers of Auburn a really good deal almost, right? One hundred and four million, seven hundred and four thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars, please.
Still moved.
Thank you, Mr. Carrier. Have a second? Thank you, Pam. All right, let's open it up for conversation at this time. Any conversation? I will say the Building Committee has vetted this one, it's really been hours and hours and hours, so we're pleased to present it to you this evening. Any questions, comments, all of the last presentation was part of your onboarding package this evening as well. We have Harriman, Lisa and Mark from Harriman are here.
It's nice to see you in person and not on a Zoom screen.
All right, seeing no, seeing no questions or comments at this time. There's a motion on the table, all those in favor of awarding the contract to Art Dudley. All those in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Dudley. Thank you. Be forewarned, I hear that you have your trucks pretty much ready to go tomorrow morning, 7:00 a.m. You are ready to roll, am I correct?
We have everything ready to roll. The only pickup that happened today was our Hepary fence is coming out of South Carolina, which is nine hundred and forty-four miles away, on the road as I speak. It will not be here in the morning, it's going to be here Friday morning.
Okay.
They're going to put up barriers so that they can access it and equipment, and that type of thing. Not any actual water war on, which is a problem, if we get started.
Okay, thank you. So I will recap for those who didn't hear, we're just waiting for the temporary fencing, and that is a couple hundred miles away. We'll be here on, on Friday morning. So at this time, Dr. Brown is going to step up for just a moment. She has some contracts that she needs to go sign with Mr. Dudley now. All right, thank you very much for coming this evening. Okay, moving along, the presentation, the reentry steering committee is here tonight to talk to us about some recommendations for maximizing in-person learning. Yes, so if there are members from the steering committee that are in the community room, we are inviting you to come on in.
So as they file in, I'll go ahead and get started. Thank you, as always, and for the inviting our steering committee here tonight to present to you. As you know, at the February 3rd School Committee meeting, the School Committee approved the steering committee recommendation to use Wednesdays to bring alternating cohorts back into schools. This was a step, but not a destination in increasing in-person learning. So tonight, we have members from the steering committee here, and they'll be presenting to you the recommendations coming out of the steering committee to continue to increase in-person learning. I was, in preparing for this tonight, I was reminding, or reminded of the fact that members of this school committee have been committed, expressing their commitment to bringing our students back into school as soon as possible while maintaining safety. And so it's with that in mind that the steering committee has been doing its work. And just one minute, if I might, I just would like to recognize, these are some of the members of the committee. This is probably third, maybe, of the steering committee who were able to be here tonight. They were all invited, but they were, these were the folks who, who were able to come. But I just would like to recognize them, the, the task that they've undertaken, some from the beginning of the school year to now, most recently, has been monumental. And I would say it's just increased in its monumental stature of a task. So I just want to recognize them tonight, many hours, certainly being diligent and open-minded in addressing the goal that came out of, again, from hearing from the School Committee about the direction that, that was important for our students. So the goal in mind that they, that we've used in our meetings here is the, to increase in-person learning while maintaining the current safety guidelines. So those safety guidelines are the masking, the hand hygiene, you know, they all fall under those six guidelines to reopen school, the distancing being maintaining in the current level of six feet. So we're just real clear on that. The recommendation, you've seen in your packet, but the recommendation tonight that you will be discussing and deciding upon later in the agenda is number one, high support needs students from pre-K to eighth grade will attend school five days a week. And the second part is all students in Cohorts A and B in grades nine through 12 will attend school five days a week. You can see that, what happened to me? I got booted off? I'll see if I can't get back on. The way that the, that we went, the committee went about deciding on how we would determine the number of students in the pre-K through grades eight who would come back into the school would be contingent on the amount of space available. So there was a great deal of work that was done, has been done over and over, really, again, by building administrators to determine what exactly the space is available, given the guidelines that have been put in place. And it was determined that we could not bring in all of our students, but how many students can we bring in? but how many students can we bring in? And that was the difficult part of this exercise, was determining that. But the, the spaces that were identified that we could, in each classroom, bring students back in, we knew we could bring more students back in, and we wanted to maximize those numbers to the greatest degree possible, rather than just let them sit empty, where there were spaces that we could fill. And then the second part for the pre-K through grades eight is we'll begin to have those students invited back, working with families as early as March 22nd, but by April 5th, we will have identified and students will have, will be attending. So that gives some time to make those contacts, to have those meetings, to set up those plans and have students come in. The high school, students will begin that five-day in-person schedule at the start of the fourth quarter on April 5th. And you'll hear more about that as we move through the presentation. The proposal's based on a few things. Like I said earlier, it maintains the guidelines and the safety strategies that we've put in place. It also utilizes the current, and I have to say, highly successful procedures and protocols that are in the schools now. You'll hear a little bit about that at the high school in particular. Stable cohorts will remain and be expanded. So you may have heard about crossing cohorts. So right now, we have cohort A and B for the sake of organizing and letting people know when they come to school. When I say stable cohorts, we talk about stable cohorts. I'm talking about for contact tracing purposes. So the stable cohort will now be expanded from maybe eight students in, who come on Monday and Tuesday, to 12 students who come on any day during the week in, let's say, Ms. Pierce's classroom. So that will be the cohort now, and that cohort will remain stable. So we had very small numbers in our cohorts. Those numbers are going to increase, not by a lot in, in most cases, but the cohort will be stable. In other words, they won't be crossing into other cohorts to the degree possible. That's the same, that maintained to the degree possible is no different than right now. We do have some situations where we do have some crossing. And that impacts us when we have, if in the case that we would have to contact trace a positive case. Parent involvement in the decision-making. Keeps kicking me out. Parent involvement in the decision-making. We will be contacting parents in the upcoming days to let them know that their student has been identified and make that offer of their participation. Give them for just a minute. Also, we'll be providing transportation and meals to those who have needs. Our, we have, we will hear a little bit about that later on in the presentation. We are able to maintain that. The meals will stay the same because we have, we're maintaining the six, in this proposal, we're maintaining the six feet. So students will be able to eat in their classrooms and maintain that, that same process that we've used for feeding students. And then we'll continue to respond to positive cases in the same way that we have with contact tracing. So that's what this proposal is predicated on. Those are the pieces, the foundational pieces to this, to this proposal. So I'm going to invite up now elementary members of the committee to talk to you a little bit about what that looks like at the elementary level in more specifics. So if Mrs. Bodett would come up, Ms. Pierce, and Mrs. Russo.
Ms. Cherry.
Great, great. Mrs. Russo is a second-grade teacher at Sherwood Heights School. Ms. Pierce, where are you this year? Fifth grade this year at Park Avenue School. And of course, Ms. Bodett is principal at the Fairview School.
Okay, so our level, our elementary level worked on a plan to safely increase in-person learning for our high support needs students. And as part of that plan, we did do a lot of talking about equality, fairness, and equity. And, you know, equal is defined as the same or exactly alike. Fair is defined as just or appropriate in the circumstances. And equity is defined as the quality of being fair and impartial. So if you look at equality, it means that each individual or group of people is given the same resources or opportunities. So in the diagram, the first group, they each have, they have an apple tree, they have a crate, and so they are given the same resources for apple picking. Equity recognizes that each person has different circumstances and allocates the exact resources and opportunities needed to reach an equal outcome. So to the right, you notice that additional resources are given to make the opportunity equal. So additional crates are added, two and three in some cases. And really, the takeaway is equity can only occur in schools and in society if we are okay with people getting what they need, even if it seems better or more than what someone else is getting. So the considerations that we use to identify our students, we looked to see what academic supports they needed or interventions additional to what they were receiving now. We looked at attendance and the lack of remote participation in many cases. We looked at the inability to access necessary support on the remote days especially. And then we looked at the safety and well-being of our students. So grade-level teachers and support staff worked with administrators to make recommendations. So what will it look like? So if you look to the right, that is a picture taken today at Fairview School. The top picture is cohort B, and there are seven students in cohort B that were in attendance today. The bottom picture is cohort B expanded, and that has an additional seven students that were added, just for the sake of the picture. What you'll notice is, or you might not notice, but you can't see, because I was pressed up against a wall trying to get the whole classroom, to the, in the bottom picture, there's a desk, teacher desk to the right, there's a kidney table to the left that has a place for small group work, there's a table in the front corner and a chair to the left. So no furniture was moved, we just repurposed the desks to just show you what an expanded cohort might look like. So what it would look like for students who would be attending five days, and Paula and Courtney jump in, because this is your expertise, you're in the classroom, but students might have individualized plans, which might mean that they do hear a lesson again. Repetition is not a, it's a great learning strategy actually. If they needed to hear the lesson again, they might hear the lesson again. If not, they would be working on whatever work the teacher has deemed appropriate for them, what meets their needs. They would have differentiated instruction. So one thing that elementary teachers do every day, and they do it really well, is differentiate instruction. They have lots of kids in their classroom at different levels, and they're constantly meeting the needs of those students. So using a workshop model helps to do that. A direct instruction, a mini lesson, might be 10 to 20 minutes in length. Then kids go off and do what they're working, what they need to be working on, while teachers meet with kids, check in with kids. So a student who's there five days may have participated in that lesson again. Or they may have been working on what they need to work, and then the teacher can check on them after. They do have access to that teacher. And then those students would have opportunities for interventions, which might be provided by specialists, special education teachers, counselor, the clinician, and any other support staff that we have. Anything you ladies would like to add to that?
I, for the differentiated instructions, like I have a couple of students who are way higher than the students that I have in my classroom. So they have work from their enrichment teacher that they work on first, and while I do my mini lesson with somebody else with the rest of the class, and then I have another lesson with them. So that's basically what it would look like if I had those, you know, students in there five days a week.
And if anything, this pandemic has only enhanced teachers' creativity and our flexibility. Our multitasking has, has been enhanced greatly as well. So the advantage with us having our smaller cohorts that we've had, we've really gotten to know our students very thoroughly. And so we're ready to take on more, and we are ready to give them what they need, especially our students that are not maybe participating as much at home. They just, they need to be with us. They need to be in the room, getting whatever else we can give them to enhance what they need.
Next slide? Oh, it's, is it done?
We're having a little technical difficulty. I have the next slide, you do not.
It is a good thing I copied.
Oh, you did, you did, you're right.
I was wondering how you did that so whilst the last.
So some of the considerations that we, nope, I already did that. Hold on. Where will it look like? Oh, there we go, already did that. So how many students would be returning at the elementary level? So these are approximate numbers at this point, but approximately 27 students would be asked to return for five days. That's about 17% of East Auburn's population. At Fairview, about 105 students would be asked to attend five days a week, and that's about 23% of our population. Park Avenue is 86 students attending five days a week, with about, that's 28% of their population. Sherwood Heights would be 94 students attending five days a week, that's 29% of their population. Walton at 82, with 36% of their population. And Washburn at approximately 65, with 26% of their population. So it's about 459 elementary school students that we would be looking to bring back five days a week. That's about 27% of our total population of elementary school students. And then, of course, most importantly, parents would have final say once their students, student is invited.
Was that your last slide?
That was the last slide for elementary.
Okay, so let's open it up to questions for thinking just about the elementary school reentry proposal at this point for elementary. Any questions at this point?
I've got a question.
Go ahead.
So I know you guys have figured out the identified students that will be returning. Say if half of those students, their parents decide not to send them back full-time, will you go to the next students on the list? Is that, so will every six foot of every classroom be filled?
So that's a good question. We are not necessarily filling every single seat that's available right now, because we're looking at the criteria. With that being said, we know that not everybody, or we're anticipating that not everybody that we invite will want, want this. So we would look at other students who could benefit from it. The other piece is, just because we're asking them right now, it doesn't mean that two weeks down the road, we're like, oh, you know, Johnny really could have benefited, and something's going on, let's, you know, we would have some openings and some space to be, to ask kids to join.
Okay. And then my other question is, I know there's other school districts going back full-time with the three-foot rule. How have we explored that? And I know that looks different with eating and other aspects of the daily classroom. But I know other schools are doing that, so can anybody speak to that, why we're sticking with the six?
Sure. At this point, the, the committee was using the recommendation based on the six feet, because that has been the standard. And so the committee has, in their deliberations, particularly in the time of deliberations about this, felt that that was an important piece to stay with. It's changing. It's shifting right now. And as you said, you know, different school districts, but across the country, this is being talked about and, and, and looked at. Do we have the ability, if that were the decision that were made, to go to three feet and bring people in? We would, we would follow that directive.
I think you, do you have, you have the spacing for six feet within, within the classroom, but then that has to also be maintained when they're eating as well, so.
Challenge that would, would have to be addressed is, the biggest challenge, I think you'd hear at all levels, is to go to three feet would, would, would allow that for students, three feet between students. It would still maintain a six feet, from what I'm understanding that's coming, might come, is six feet to adults. And we would still need to maintain six feet when students are eating. And that's the, the biggest challenge, biggest hurdle, the biggest challenge that would have to be addressed.
And Michelle, to, to go with that, we eat in the room with our children, so they're at their seats, and they're very clear on the directions. They have been amazing, the kids. They sit there, I know at the time they're eating, they stay at their space, and they have their mask off, obviously. But when they need to get up to throw their things out, they just put their masks back on, and they wash up. So they follow the protocol better than probably most adults do. So we just have to keep maintaining that protocol.
Any other questions, Pam?
Yes, I have a few questions. First, I'd like to know, okay, you had talked about how some depends on the school, if we're going to be bringing back more kids who are struggling. What happens if, because all our schools are different sizes. We have some larger schools, we have some larger classrooms, some can fit more kids than others. What if a teacher has five kids who are struggling, but they are at a school that is smaller? How will those kids be picked to come back? Which ones will be picked to come back, and which ones will be asked not to come back? When they're all struggling, and if they're like equally struggling at the same time?
Well, we would use that criteria, we would work with parents. There's lots of different factors, so sometimes we do have, you know, kids who are struggling, but we know for whatever reason Johnny's parents don't want him to come back. So it's really kind of knowing your students, knowing your families. If you look at the percentages, actually, so Fairview is the largest school, and so we do have space, but my percent is only 23% of my population, where, you know, Walton is 36%, Sherwood Heights 29, and Washburn is even right in that average of 26. So decisions do have to be made, and I think we work together as a team, we work with parents, we look at the students, we look at their needs, and, you know, just go from there.
So if, if it's just going to be, the suggestion that you're making is just struggling kids that are coming back. It's not like Faith said, or someone said, I'm sorry, it's not you, saying we're not just filling seats. Like if we have the available, the available space in one class, we're not just filling up those seats because we have the availability. We're doing it because just the struggling kids are coming in.
Well, and struggling encompasses lots of things. It doesn't, it might not be struggling academically. It could be struggling, you know, socially, emotionally. So it encompasses, but lots of factors. But no, we're not looking at, okay, we have X amount of seats, and we're filling all of those. And one of the reasons we're not doing that is because it's, it's not the same across the district. So I might be, I might have bigger classrooms, and I might be able to fit a lot more kids in than Washburn, who has smaller classrooms and is more restricted. So that's why the criteria helps us to kind of stay focused on what kids we're looking at for right now.
I think the other thing that, and I know that Michelle, and we had talked about this earlier this week, was that I just got a new student. So you have to, like, you have to have that flexibility. So if you fill all your seats and you have a student move in, where is that student supposed to go? So I think you have to look at everything and have some flexibility as to, like, you need to have some seats open, because not, you know, you are going to have those students that move in.
You know, we're looking at our kids as, you know, we'll have our two cohorts at this point right now, and we have our kids coming in that we look at. And we have our kids coming in that we look at how they're doing all the remote work. They participate in every Zoom you do. They, um, participate in the classroom. So those are, are stronger, not always just higher, but they do have supports in place. And some of them are just internally motivated. But then we have other kids that just, they're, they're not able to sit at home and follow my Google Classroom plan when they're not with me. Um, they don't have someone, oh, did you check number two? Did you do number three? Did you, did you read this attachment? Um, so there's so many things that we have to look at in, as our guidelines to make those determinations. So it's not just two or three little things we're looking at. There's a lot of, there's a lot to the picture that we're looking at as we make those decisions.
So my question is, what is the criteria? Because I'm hearing that the criteria encompasses a lot, but I don't know the specific criteria. Is it grades? Is it truancy? Is it mental health? Is it social emotional learning?
So you hit, you hit everything.
Yes, it's all of those things. It's, it's not just a checkoff sheet and it's not, how many do we check off and what number did you get? Oh, you, you win the prize because you have the most because one, you know, safety and wellbeing might be the only thing checked up, checked up, but that might be the most important factor for that student. And, and so that jumps to the, to the top.
So once you get the child in the school, how will, how will you guarantee that their needs are met? So if someone comes in and they have social emotional learning or if they're having mental health issues, are we going to have counselors in the schools addressing those mental health issues? Is, if it's grades, is this child going to have more tutoring than they normally would have? What is, what, how?
They do what we do every day. So you use the word guarantee and there's never, I'd love to be able to say I can guarantee that everyone's going to get everything they need. I can't say that in a non-pandemic year, right? I can guarantee that we're going to try to give them everything they need. So we're going, it's going to give us more time with that student, more FaceTime with that student. And yes, our school counselors will be there. We'll, we'll connect them with the resources they needed, just like we do if they're here only two days a week. Um, it's just that some students could benefit from more. Um, so we're going to do all the things that we do every single day. It's just, and, and no, there's not a guarantee that it's going to work for that student, but I would like to think that something will be better for that student, something, they'll benefit from something.
And those kids too will also, like all of them do, they'll have the opportunity to have a breakfast every morning they come in, a lunch and a healthy snack. And sometimes that's more than what they're getting at home.
Thank you. Mr. Carey?
I, I guess I, I don't want this to come off as negative, but I'm looking at this list and where we had such issues in the past with identifying, identifying children for this or that. I look at this list that you have up there and knowing how children can be, I can see that we are setting those children apart from the rest of the school. And I think that that's not what we, that's not our purpose here, I know, but that's going to do it. I look at intervention and say, those kids are not as academically progressed as other kids. Lack of remote participation due to the family issues, they're, they may not have the funds to do it. The parents not, may not be able to stay at home and deal with the children. Same with inability to access the needed support. Parents may not be able to be at home to help the children do that and the safety and wellbeing. Again, we're talking about parents that are not as well off, maybe that they have to be at work and are not able to provide this. They can't take them to daycare. So what I'm seeing, while I hear what you're saying, I say, I can see right there that we're saying, well, the poor kids that don't have the family available to stay at home and help them are not as academically ahead of them. And what we're doing is we're setting them apart. And, I mean, we're just starting the, the equity and the, and the other programs. And I don't want to pigeonhole kids because as much as we say that we don't allow bullying and we don't like setting children apart, all I see is that this is setting those kids apart and it's going to set them up, you know, for whatever it is that the kids do nowadays. I, I know from having grandkids that there's still bullying going on in schools. I know that there's still all kinds of stuff and we're trying to get away from that. We're, we're doing our very best to get away from that kind of stuff. And I'm not really seeing where this is helping us do that. I mean, I understand that it's helping us address one little issue, but by doing what else? I mean, we, we may be addressing this issue, but what else are we setting those kids up for?
So what conversations have you had about what that would look like and how as, as elementary school, um, staff you are going to, you know, work against, sort of the stigma?
We spoke of that actually in our, when we were meeting today and how kids are so flexible. And many of our kids are already leaving our classrooms in front of their peers to go to counseling or to OT or PT or to special ed, um, Zooms or their intervention groups. And they love doing that. The other kids want to join them actually. So they don't look at it as something that's negative. And as far as bullying, we have not seen that. I haven't seen any because we don't have, uh, we don't, we, we don't have a morning recess at this point. Our lunches are together in our rooms. So we're, we're working as a team at this point. I feel like we're teammates right now and I don't know, I feel like there's more respect than ever right now because of this.
I have to say that in our class, in, in our school, we're a little bit different because I'm at Park Avenue. So we have a vast diversity of students. And I'm talking about our students in the ELL program. Right now our students are getting their services via Zoom. So that means, and we're having a lot of push-in when they are here in school. So instead of being taken out of the classroom, they're getting the support in the classroom. So it's not necessarily being taken out of the classroom. Um, I, we have support for whether it's special ed, whether it's the ELL program, their support. And all students are receiving that support. So, you know, in my math class, I do have ELL support, but the, the teacher that's with me, she supports all my students. So it's not necessarily just those students. So everybody gets that help.
Kids are pretty, um, they're pretty amazing and they, a lot of times don't even bat an eye. And it, it's, it's just becomes, it's the culture and, you know, Johnny's going out to get what Johnny needs. I'm here because I'm getting what I need. Um, I'm not saying that it's always perfect. And certainly we, we talk and work with students, um, who are struggling with that or students who might not be as respectful around some of those issues. But for the most part, kids are kind of, you know, I'm here, I'm doing my thing. He's doing his thing. She's doing her thing. Um, and like Paula said, and like Courtney said, pre-COVID and post-COVID, kids are going to be coming and going and getting the supports they need. Kids are wise. They know who struggles in the class. The kid who struggles knows they struggle in the class. The kid who struggles can tell you who doesn't struggle in the class. That's an every year pandemic, non-pandemic issue that we work with and we try to build self-esteem and find everybody's strengths. And my strength might be different than your strength. Um, and so it's just part of what we do and, and the culture that, that we build at school. So, I, kids are, they're amazing. So.
Anyone who hasn't asked a question yet?
Yeah, I did actually. Um, I think you've done a really thorough job with this. Um, I think it mimics well what Dr. Brown asked us to consider a while ago. I think it's imperative that we all keep in the forefront that I think maybe in January, we knew that, uh, at least 25% of these kids were challenged, were, were, were having a really, really hard time. Um, I, I agree, kids are resilient. I think the older they get, the more stigma is attached that, that I'm sure that'll be, um, considered. My question, or, and it's really not for you, Ms. Bodett, um, at some point last fall, and I don't know when it was, um, I'm on the finance committee, we approved purchasing three modular classrooms that I initially was opposed to. I didn't think we needed more real estate. And what swayed my vote was, um, a person said, this will get kids back in the classroom faster. So my question is, are we utilizing these, I think it was three, we purchased, are we utilizing these three modular classrooms to bring some, you know, additional elementary kids back to school safely? Thank you.
If I might answer, I think we purchased two. We purchased one for East Auburn. We purchased one at Washburn. I was in the one in Washburn yesterday, looked at the art supplies, looked at the music supplies. So yes, that's being used. The furniture was moved into the East Auburn one today. Uh, so I don't see Sue in here. She'd be a better person to answer that specifically. So they are being used.
Good. That's wonderful. Thank you.
So I just wanted to point out a response to Brian and Pam's question just last about, you know, is this going to label the kids? Is, I think what we have to keep in mind that ultimately we're letting the parents choose. And we're offering them an opportunity to get help where it's needed. And ultimately, if the parents aren't comfortable sending their children under those preconditions, then they can choose not to, correct?
Correct.
So, but we are providing that opportunity for those children. And as a parent, I would like that choice to choose if I was one of those parents. So I think we need to keep that in mind. We're not making these children go to school.
So parents do, yes, parents do have the final say. Abby, your question?
So circling back to what, um, our assistant superintendent said, um, with contact tracing, there's obviously not a guarantee for always in situations. So I was wondering how the busing schedule is going to work now? Are we putting more kids, mixing the cohorts onto the bus now that there's going to be more, or five days a week? What's just going on with that?
We're going to talk about that in a slide near the end, but just to give you the preview, we're going to be able to do what we've been doing, we believe. So we'll talk more specifically about that in a little bit, if that's okay?
Okay, thank you.
So, um, kind of going back to what Faith had asked about the three-feet rule. I know that there's a lot of, um, talk right now with studies, one of the studies out of Massachusetts, saying that there may not be significant difference between three and six feet. I know that we, now we know a little bit more than we did. Has that even been looked at? And if it was, if the kids were to be three feet, how would that impact? Like, would we be able to bring all the kids back at, at that point? Or would it still be that we had to pick and choose? Because I still am having, I know you did that whole.
Great. Ask your question though, Pam. Ask your question. So you asked a question. So bringing all kids back, sticking three feet?
Yes, we would, we would, we would be able to bring all students back at the elementary level. There, there would be a presentation on that as well because there are some situations that we would have to make some accommodations for. But yes, we would be able to bring back all students at the elementary level at three feet.
All right. Any other questions right now? Okay, Abby, yeah?
Um, in part what, um, Ms. Hart was saying, with all of the students in the room, what about the CDC guidelines with how many people are limited to a room? Would that just be bypassed or what would go into that?
So this presentation that you heard from the elementary staff tonight is based on six feet. So it's within the guidelines, the guidelines of, um, the main CDC says three to six feet. So we have, in Auburn have opted for a six-foot, um, standard. And so this stays within that six, everything you hear tonight will be within that six feet. So now there's a question about utilizing a three-foot standard. And, and so that's the, the question that was just asked. Yes, we can, we can get students in. There would be some places where there would be needs for accommodations to the classroom. But we can talk about that more.
Just have one more question. Sure, I'm sorry. Um, talking about the equitable, equitable, equity and how equitable this is. I know you did that whole presentation. I just, I still have an issue with the stigmatization and, um, the equality and fairness. I, I can also see parents, different parents, like let's for say Karen and I are parents and both are kids. We both have struggling kids, but my kid gets in and hers doesn't. How fair is that? I, I think that we're setting ourselves up here for a lot of disgruntled parents.
This is the piece that you want to hold on to for the, after the motion is made for the debate. Right now this is questions for them so that they can answer for you. So that, and this is for everyone, so that when you are making your vote, you have had all your questions answered. So the debate comes and the conversation comes with the motion. Okay? I just wanted, I, I should have been a little more clear about that. Sorry. Go ahead. Mr. Carey?
Question. We're talking about utilization of space, excuse me. And, uh, the fact that the kids currently stay in their, in their rooms to eat lunch now to make it safe. Have we made utilization of the, of the lunchroom and say the gymnasium? Or maybe moving the lunchroom to the gymnasium as opposed to give us more space? Are, are we currently using the gymnasiums for classrooms and everything else?
In most of the classrooms, the gymnasium is being used for PE. So you would displace the PE teacher if you've used the, um, gymnasium to eat?
At Sherwood Heights, our gymnasium is our daycare room. So our kids that are not in, when they're, they're on their off cohort day, a lot of our children go to their, our daycare in our gym. And then our PE teacher teaches that in the cafeteria. So that's at Sherwood Heights.
So most of your, so your cafeterias and your gyms are being utilized either for daycare, um, on non-cohort days? I just wanted to make sure I heard you. Um, and then like for example, your, your PE teacher is using the cafeteria in order for kids to have gym?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I think that's.
I think it's different for each, each school. So that's, yeah.
That is correct. Um, at the beginning, way back when we didn't know what the plan was going to be and we didn't know how many kids were going to come back, we did have a plan to use our gym as a cafeteria for spacing needs. So.
Well, I knew that some of the, some of the, the space lent itself for better use than, I mean, you're, you have a large gymnasium and I think automatically at East Auburn who has, you know, a cracker box. But I just wanted to know about the use of the space and what we're currently using it for.
But if I'm hearing correctly, the, the three-foot rule doesn't work for eating. And now you have no place to eat if we bring them all back because your spaces are being used.
Well, we brought them all back. Daycare wouldn't be using it during the day.
Right. We brought them all back. Now we've just, now we've just displaced daycare.
Oh, yeah.
We would need daycare. We don't need daycare.
Don't need daycare. Yeah, you don't need daycare if you bring them back.
Yeah.
This is true. Sorry about that.
Are they still going out to recess?
Yeah, not in the morning, just after they eat their lunch.
Okay.
And it's only with their cohort. They don't mix cohorts.
Any more questions for?
One more question. This is a question. Um, as far as specials, music, um, gym, art. Now, if you have two cohorts, you're going to have it on, you know, A cohort A is going to have their special that, that week. Cohort B is going to have the same special at the end of the week. How are you going to do it for the kids that come back four days? Are they going to have the same special twice?
We actually talked about that today and we thought that those that, who receive interventions would, that would be, if they were those children that were come back for five days, that would be a good opportunity for them to have, be, you know, taken into a small group or whatever, but that would be their like intervention time.
But they could. You know, there might be a week where they get to have music an extra time. And so right now they are, um, the way we're doing it is they only have one special per trimester. So they have it multiple times a week already. So they would, they would just get to join in again in some cases.
So our specialists have been alternating. So they, they'll, for instance, music was the first trimester for one cohort. And then she went to another cohort for trimester two. And so they've, they've stuck with the same cohort. So what they've had to do though is when my kids are, say are at home, they have a Zoom with their special one day. And when they're in school, they have a physical special. So they're getting it twice a week because that's how they fit it all in for the trimester.
So they wouldn't get it, they, they might get one additional special if their other interventions, like Courtney said, didn't happen to, you know, if the schedule didn't work out.
Thank you. Any other questions for elementary? All right, seeing none. Thank you all so much for all the work that's gone into this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Hmm, middle school.
Tanya, would you step in here to see if you can help me with Airplane? I did restart.
I'm Bob Griffin, the principal of the middle school. I'm joined by Sean McGaw, the middle school assistant principal, and Sue Callahan, a veteran middle school teacher and also one of our team leaders. And I'm going to get things started, but they are going to chime in. They, they've approached this work from different perspectives. Mr. McGaw has been part of this reentry committee since its inception last, last spring. Ms. Callahan and I have joined the work now for the last few months. So to just give you a picture of Auburn Middle School today, and I want to highlight just a few differences about the middle school compared to the elementary and the high school. So today, or as of a couple of weeks ago, we had enrollment of 494 students, 150 of them fully remote. Knowing that there was some increasing demand at the end of the summer about, for parents wanting to go fully remote, I made the decision to put together a fully remote dedicated team of teachers. And that has gone, that has gone very well. So those teachers are still in the building every day, but they're, they're working the same. So I do not expect much movement from fully remote students to coming back in five days. Currently on A days in person, we have about 179 students. On B days, 165. You may ask, why are those numbers a little bit lopsided? That is because we have since the beginning of the school year accommodated every single parent request for movement. And that, that hasn't always been easy and that changes multiple times a week. You know, case numbers might go up. We get calls from parents, they would like their kids to go fully remote and vice versa. You know, so there's been a lot of shifting, but we have accommodated every single request as the year has gone on. That has caused some of the, some of the numbers to be, be just a little bit, a little bit different. Now, the middle school, you've heard me mention this before, has teams. Those teams know their students exceptionally well. You know, students may be on a small, a smaller team with two primary teachers or they may be on a larger team with four teachers. The teachers meet during the week, during common planning time. They talk about their students. They know their student strengths and weaknesses. They know their student star scores, grades. They know struggles possibly outside of school. They know the social emotional needs of, of all of their students. And looking at the criteria we have put together, and I appreciated listening to the comments and questions from school committee members with the earlier presentation. I, I as principal, I'm worried about, I'm worried about things like star scores. I'm more worried about the social emotional health of my students. So that, when, when I have asked, when I've tasked team leaders in the last few weeks to begin this work, which they have eagerly taken on, that is, you know, I said, it isn't, it isn't all the star scores. We may have a student who is doing okay on their star testing, but is having, they're having a really tough time outside of school. And we, we, we need them in school. We need them where they connect with our, our interventionist, with our social worker, with our school counselors and things like that. So the, the criteria that I had asked the team leaders and that our group had come up with, you know, is teams will be making recommendations to extend invitations to families. You know, looking at star scores, progress reports, grades, remote attendance, and then the, the mental health needs and individual needs are considered when we're making these recommendations for these students to return to five days a week. So again, it isn't real easy to quantify the social emotional needs of students. So that is why we very intentionally did not have cutoffs of. We didn't say they're failing one class or their star score is this, you know, we really wanted to look a little bit more holistically and again leaning toward the social emotional and mental health needs of, of our, of our students. And to Mr. Carrier's point earlier, this, I, I, and we, not, not just I, I've been very thoughtful about, for example, the stigma and what that may feel like for, for students being invited back. That is why this would be an invitation to the families. This would be conversation with the families and with the students. And, and I will, I will say, I'm not the slightest bit worried about filling slots. I think, I think a lot of kids want to get back to school and they want to connect with, with their school counselors and, and, and get the, the meals and all of that, all of that other stuff. But I absolutely, no one is remanded to this. So I, I want to be really, really clear that this would be, you know, an invitation that we are extending to the families that they certainly can say, can absolutely say no. Right now, we have about 344 students who are, who are in person. This, what we are proposing expands, you know, our, our slots. So we, we have 291 seats available at Auburn Middle School. We have measured and remeasured and we measured again. And I also want to, want you to hear from me, I made the decision that I was not going to decimate classrooms. I was not going to remove bookshelves from all of the classrooms. Now, if there was stuff that could be removed, we absolutely have removed it and stored it. But it was a priority of mine that we absolutely want to have as many seats in classrooms as we can, but I did not want it to be just this barren cave. You know, it's really important that teachers have access to, to their teaching resources. It's important that we have books in, in classrooms and stuff like that. I also want to share with you, you know, we, we're, my math is going to be great here. We're about 55 spaces down. You know, with, with 55 more spots, we could, we could have, have our students back. There are two primary challenges with that. One is space. I, I also made the decision that I think the middle school library is a really important place. I think it's really important during the pandemic. We have been putting out a ton of books that students are bringing home. So I did not close our library and put a classroom in there. Now, even if I did, I don't have adults to supervise that. We have been down multiple positions every day of the school year. And in addition to the multiple positions we've been down, the last couple of days have, have been typical examples. We, we had seven people out yesterday and we had six people out today. So we are stretched so thin that that is Mr. McGaw and I covering classes, which, which we love to do, but is not, is not, is not all that easy. So to find spots for those 55 students, I, we need to, would need to think about space. I also, we use our gym every period of every day and, and even before school and, and after school. So I also made the decision that I did not believe it was in the best interest of Auburn Middle School to carve up that space for regular classrooms and then, then back to the other problem. If I did, I don't have the staff to cover it. So that is where, and I want to want, because it's been mentioned, I want to be, I want to be pretty upfront because I've been doing this, this long enough that I've learned to try to think multiple steps ahead. You know, so we're not always being reactive. So we, we, I and we have given some thought to, to what if, what if it were three feet? We, we could bring Auburn Middle School students back at, at three feet. There, there would is, Ms. McClellan had mentioned, there would be some challenges with that. For example, some work I did today would, and looking at it, would probably require us to have about seven, we believe seven lunches. We originally thought eight, but it'd be, it'd be seven. So I mean, that would be roughly starting first lunch around, you know, around 9:30-ish. You know, so tho, those are some of the challenges in addition to, you know, I think some things like transportation and, and stuff like that. But we are proposing in our plan to bring back 112 students, five days a week to cohort A, 126 additional students can return into, into cohort B. The next page gives a breakdown of the actual teams. And Birch is, what I talked about at the bottom was our fully remote team. That's why that says not applicable. And at this point, for example, Ms. Callahan is the team leader on Spruce. So Sue, maybe you could talk a little bit about what this would look like.
So like, the reason why we have 21 seats on A is we've had some students who've decided to go fully remote. And because we're synchronously teaching, I don't repeat lessons. I teach, and I expect to see the kids either on Zoom or in front of me every day. Well, five days a week. I give myself, we give our weekends off, right? So 30, so about, we have that 39% is a little higher than our B day because I've had some students who've chosen to be remote for health reasons. They want to be near their grandparents. And I'm finding that some of those switching as vaccinations are happening. But even with the returning on Wednesdays, I do have some parents who've opted not to let their kids come more than two days a week. So it really depends on the parent and it depends on the family and it needs to be ultimately their choice. I mean, obviously, I, I try to say, I really need your kid here in front of me. It'd be so much, it's a lot easier to, to work with them one-on-one. So what we did, my team met for two hours last Wednesday to try, and some of this is after school time. I think you guys need to hear that, especially at the middle school, we don't have time to meet as a team like we normally did. And so the team teachers are using the after school time when we're not doing extra Zooms with kids to help get some of them caught up. We're meeting together. So we have to be pretty inventive to keep our teaming and our team atmosphere. And I think that's been pretty much our, our whole challenge. I'm pretty impressed with my team that we were able to come up with a list and then an alternate list. But it wasn't easy to do. And I know some of you are worried about the stigma and that was a big, you know, we say, okay, so student X, we want to bring them back. Is that good for them? Are they gonna, are they gonna feel like we're telling them that they're not good enough and they need extra help? Or is they're going to take that in a bad way? Or is this student going to take this in a good way? I mean, I've had, I have students who are honor roll students who are saying, when can I come back full time? I hate learning at home. I don't like being at home. And then they tell you about their homes. Just because a kid is, is an honor roll child doesn't mean they're not suffering in their home environment. So we really, I can't just say, I can't just look at our star scores. I have to look at everything when I'm looking at, at the kid. So fortunately, I have 21 kids on A that we've got spaces for and 18. Now that changes daily. I have kids who may decide to go remote next week. Or, you know, I have a kid who's gone to Florida. Her family's decided to go to Florida next week. So then she has to quarantine. She's going to be gone. Can I fill in that space for a little bit? So these numbers continue to fluctuate and it's always a moving target for us, which I think causes us a lot of time to step back, reflect. If we were to have the three feet, we could bring, you should know, Mr. McGaw has done a lot of geometry. And he's, his high school geometry seemed to come in play here about where we could actually fit kids in. My, my question is about lunches. I mean, we still have to be six feet apart at lunches. These kids are sitting in the same seat all day long. It's hard enough to keep them apart when they're six feet. I can't imagine three feet. We're talking about middle schoolers. You're talking teenagers, you know? I think they're kind of the same as kindergartners sometimes when it comes to following directions. Just, I've been doing this.
I work in a middle school. I.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, I've been doing this a while. So, and I love the age. So just, I'm not, that's not meant as a, as a dig. So I, I think we tried to really look at everything when we came up with that list. So I wanted to speak to that because I know that was a worry. And the numbers, I'm hoping we could increase them with the three feet, but it doesn't increase that much with the three feet because of our spacing.
No, it does.
It does.
It does.
No, we needed, we needed desks. We have to wait till you order more desks. But I guess that's a Mr. Hanson issue. That's not a us issue.
So, so we do have, if we were to move to the three feet in the classroom, we can fit the, all of the students. As you can see, we only need about 55 more students in. But the, the lunchroom piece, sorry, the lunchroom piece is really the key. And for us, that we can only fit someplace around 35 or 40 students in the lunchroom with the six-foot spacing. And we are using our gymnasium at all times. We are using our library. And so for us to be able to feed those students is literally going to take hours.
And we have to have appropriate coverage for middle school kids. It isn't like high school kids, you can just send them into the cafeteria and let them eat. High school kids need, need a little more, less supervision than middle school. So coverage is also an issue. Like you could have some in the cafeteria and have some on the team, but then we don't have enough teachers covering and the teachers also getting their duty free, you know, 20 minutes. So it, it's a quite a conundrum as Mr. McGaw and Mr. Griffin have found out in doing schedules.
So this plan would maintain the remote option for, for those who have chosen that. There would also be students who are there for two days a week like cohort A and two days a week cohort B. And then there would be a group of students who were there, who were there five days a week. And I, with confidence can say, like Sue had talked about the work her team has done, we will be ready, you know, depending on how this evening goes, to implement this and get, going right away and getting these, getting these students back. We, all of us, without exception, believe that in-person, face-to-face learning is, is best for our students.
And the, the 291 number does reflect 84 and a half percent of our students back. So it is the vast majority of our students back, of the in-person students. So that's pretty exciting for us.
Questions at this point?
How many would you be inviting through the tunnel?
So each, so on.
This would be a five-day school week.
Yeah. So, so you can see, each team would have individually those, those numbers.
I think there was a slide that you had 112 students in cohort A, 126 students in cohort B.
Yes, there was.
I'm going to stay away from numbers tonight and you're saying the numbers.
The team one is, to me, it, it makes more sense in my mind because it isn't, some teams have different numbers. And, you know, you have kids who, like on my team, I have every kid take social studies and science and only have pull-out. Some other teams have pull-out for more than just, you know, just language arts and math. So it, it really gets kind of complicated in that. So I think it's better to look at per team. I don't know. I've just trained, Auburn Middle School has trained me to look at things per team. Can you explain?
And if you look at Team Maple, for instance, Team Maple is a two-teacher team. So that's why their percentages are still relatively similar to the other teams because, with smaller numbers of students because it's only two classrooms.
Right.
So.
So I have, I have, we have four classrooms on our team. And so 21 students, 21 seats are available throughout. Like one classroom actually doesn't have any seats because there are 13 kids in that class. And then I have, and then we actually have two remote kids also. So, and then there's another one that I can bring back seven because a lot of kids have gone remote in that class. It's just the way it shifted out.
So if they went five days a week, you would add the 17 to the 25, let's say Pine, or let's say Maple, there'd be 22 kids in that, coming back in that entire.
I can go by Spruce. So I'd have 21 kids I'd normally see on Tuesday, Thursday. I have 21 kids now I'm seeing on Monday and Tuesday as well.
It's not 21 and 18?
Well, I'd be seeing 21 extra, those A students would now be coming on, 21 extra on Thursday and Friday and 18 on Monday and Tuesday.
So you would have for five days, would you have 39 kids?
No, I have way more than that.
Right, yeah.
I have something like 72, 82 kids.
I don't understand this. I'm sorry. I don't understand this.
It's an increase.
That's how many more students.
The title of that is.
Oh, we'd be more coming.
Students returning.
All right. I thought it was your total. That's why I'm, I'm sitting here like.
No, I have 82 kids, I have 82 kids on my team.
Okay.
I might be down to 80 because I think two moved, but you know, the numbers fluctuate daily.
Okay. So you'd be having 21 more for A.
And cohort A, 18 more.
But you wouldn't, would you continue to have cohort A and cohort B? Or, okay, so you're still going to, you want to still do hybrid?
For contact.
Full-time and, and full remote? So you're talking all three options? Okay.
Now, now I do want to sort of clarify when I talked about, and this was absolutely the right thing to do, I believe, to accommodate every parent request along the way. Our plan here is to. Our plan here is to fill almost every seat. Now, I want to leave a tiny number available for any move-ins that might happen. But what this, I, I believe would necessitate would be us essentially needing to stop a lot of requests. You know, because we, we just are not going to have the, we're not going to have the, the flexibility. For example, if we have, um, ten students who are learning remotely who want to come back, we're not gonna necessarily have the seats for that. So it does tighten that, that up a little bit. But, but I, I believe, I mean, we're, we're approaching the fourth quarter. I believe it's, it's completely, completely workable. And again, as I said, the vast majority of our fully remote students are already connected to a team and their teachers. So I do not expect much movement at all from that.
I was gonna ask you that, the fluidity of, of, you know, giving everybody the permission to change, to do this and do that. How will, how will that work if you're so tight for spots?
Yep. And, and, and I, I, with confidence, I can speak, we've been doing that all year. You know, we've, we, I've had to make sure there are equitable balances in teacher classrooms and team assignments and everything like that. So we've gotten very, very good at placing students and supporting them and making sure they're connected to the resources they need and everything like that. Again, what I would make sure we do is leave what would be a pretty small number of spots available. And those would really be for the move-ins we have into the, in, into our district in these, these last few months.
Any other questions for the middle school team, Mr. Simpson?
It's, it's actually a point and I, and it's for everybody. And I think, because somebody just, uh, made a really good point that I think we should, we should consider. When we talk stigma, homelessness, dropping out, being incarcerated and being forced to repeat a grade, there's a stigma attached to that too. Um, which I think is pretty powerful, um, that I think these folks have done the best they can, I personally believe. Three feet is where it's supposed to go. I personally believe.
Do you, do you have a question for them? Want to make sure we hang on to that?
I'm gonna go off, but I just wanted to bring those points of stigma that, that's.
Hang on to that, bring it back when we do conversation and, and debate. Any other questions for our middle school team? Do you have a question?
So the kids that are coming in, you're talking about filling in every seat that you possibly can. Um, is that just the failing kids? Like not failing kids, I, I'm sorry, that's the struggling kids.
So, so the, I mean, the, the sort of the term we, we've adopted is the, the high support. So again, as Sue had mentioned.
It might not be a child who's failing. I have an honor roll student I will be asking to come in because I believe the home situation, it's better for her to be with me five days a week.
I, I agree with you. I think that there are kids who are gonna have.
Yes, stick to a question. I just, just to keep things moving, I want the questions and the conversation and debate needs to come with the motion. Any other questions for these folks?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all the work that you have done and for answering our questions. All right. High school folks. Hello, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I am grateful to be joined by Carrie Lathrop, one of our esteemed English teachers and one of the co-chairs of the English department tonight. Uh, for us, um, we are, our proposal is to be able to bring our Cohorts A and B students back five days a week. Uh, the biggest question that we get asked often is why now? This will provide the most access for the most students. Uh, the room capacity and enrollments allow for students from Cohorts A and B to attend five days a week. As we've crunched numbers based on room capacities and enrollments, we're able to see that in the vast majority of classes, we would, at this point in time, be able to get our Cohorts A and B in. Thirty to forty percent of our classes are quarter classes. Changing at the start of the fourth quarter prevents multiple changes for students. We already have some natural changes that are taking place. And in our proposed plan, we tried to minimize the number of changes that they would have to do through the building. By having more access to students in the building, we will be better able to support the social and emotional well-being for person, for in-person students. Heard a lot of conversation tonight about the things that you can't see beyond a grade or a star score. All of our students need that support and this allows us to provide as much support as we can five days a week, uh, for the social, emotional aspects of all of our students. And another really key, important component for us, it provides the most, more access to seniors needing to complete their graduation requirements. And that's just not to say seniors who may be in a recovery situation, but they're enrolled in their classes now. It allows us to be able to finish with a strong flourish and give them at least some aspects of their senior experience, the very best that we can. How can this happen? Well, having crunched the numbers and looked at our room capacities that we've established back in, uh, the fall, based at six-feet spacing. Some classes will change rooms for a period to accommodate their enrollments in a room with a larger room capacity. So I have a room that has fourteen and the room capacity is twelve. And across the hall, I have a room capacity that's twenty and they have twelve. We can swap places. Uh, there's not widespread numbers of those and we'll talk about that soon. Students may be placed in an alternative classroom for that selected period to access their class remotely or work in a workshop model under supervision of a buddy teacher. Earlier this evening, you heard the elementary teachers talking about the, uh, the, um, workshop model and how that allows for supportive differentiation and honing in on what the needs are for the students. This allows the teacher to identify that period which students would need to go to their remote site for that period, uh, to access them. That may be group work or that may be zooming in or that may be independent work. We often have seen that in the past when we have a student that needed to review prior to taking a test while the rest of the students took a test. We often found alternative sites for that. It's very much built on that premise. And we will still continue to work with students and families who are full-remote to explore possibilities for increasing in-person learning. We have done, our, the assistant principals have done an incredible job at reaching out to families that are fully remote. Who, the families have reached out to us to say they're struggling. Their data indicates that they're struggling. And so we're trying to get any kind of piece of get them into the building if it's for one day or one period. We say over and over in our building, if I can just get you into the building, I can do something. And so it really, with the remote students, we're still going to continue on that path. Who is affected? So on the top, you see that we have Cohort A is right now, we have three hundred and twenty-three students in Cohort A. In Cohort B, we have three hundred and eighteen. That is about six hundred and forty-one students that make up Cohorts A and B. That was the number that we took to try to see what does that look like throughout the building. And right now we have two hundred and sixty-five in Cohort C. This number has been very volatile throughout the year and the last month and a half, we've seen this stabilize. To allow us to make the best assumption, which is a scary word, but the best assumption about how stable can that number be? When we did the math and looked at the numbers in the room capacities, we have seventy-five total students out of that six hundred and forty-one. Will need to be relocated to a buddy teacher depending on attendance of class each day. So if you had a class that had a capacity of fourteen and you had sixteen enrolled, there's a possibility that two students may be absent. And so no change would need to happen that day. Maybe everyone is there and then those two students that get identified by the teacher based on what we talked about earlier, that some of that workshop model, some of that independent model would be sent to their buddy teacher class. Overall, we have twenty-seven classrooms that would be impacted. If we look at seventy teachers approximately teaching about four periods straight a day, that's about two hundred and eighty classes that happen every single day. That would be twenty-seven of the classrooms that would be impacted. The majority of these classrooms will only move about one to three students, uh, to their buddy teacher. What does this look like? The picture on the left is a classroom from this morning. This is a math classroom that had about ten students enrolled with a capacity of fourteen. Across the hall, and that's Cohort B on the left, just Cohort B students. Across the hall, we had a Cohort B and C combined class taking place. So you could see that there are some additional spaces in there. The teacher was instructing the person that was there. They had two absent plus their Cohort C students simultaneously. So if we had overflow from the picture on the left, they could be across the hall accessing their class, uh, from the classroom on the right. The other advantage of this being in proximity is if we're talking about the whole day, the student would still have access to that teacher during their flex time at the end of the day if they weren't readily, directly available to them during that period. And we'll continue to implement all of our safety measures that we have up to this point and have been very successful for us. Uh, six-foot spacing is what we've worked on from the beginning of the school year. One-way traffic will continue. Hand sanitizing, mask-wearing, sanitizing of surfaces, nightly cleanings of classrooms, the lunch protocols of keeping students six feet apart. Come back to that question. We do utilize the cafeteria for a program down there. However, very similar to what the middle school described and, and we do have supervision, a tremendous amount of supervision for lunch. We would be starting at about nine o'clock in the morning and running all the way until two-ten if we were to try to do that based on, uh, the six-foot distancing that we still have in place for eating. Right now, they eat in the classroom, which is why we continue to use that six-foot mark within the classrooms because that's where they are eating. And we continue to use our QR code to assist us. And, uh, instead of getting a paper pass, they now scan in and out so we can track them for contact tracing purposes. If they were to go to the bathroom, go to guidance, go to the nurse. So we know approximately how long in their path so that we can find them on the camera. If we need to identify if they were in contact with someone for fifteen minutes. As well as we will continue to follow all DOE and COVID guidelines that have been set forth in the framework and apply them as we have all year long.
Just want to make sure. I'll set Mr. Oni. Any questions for our high school? Brian?
Quick question, as you mentioned on the lunch period. What, what is a school lunch period now?
So right now, uh, lunch begins at twelve oh five and runs till twelve thirty-five. It happens within their classroom. Uh, they have thirty minutes, um, in this model. Because, uh, we have a thirty-minute duty-free lunch period for the teachers. That's why it's built that way. We create supervision, uh, being creative with staff and ed techs to supervise hallways. Uh, so we're patrolling admin, uh, free bodies that aren't doing that. And we kind of scaffold in that lunch process. In a typical year, it would be about twenty minutes in the cafeteria, five for travel down, five for travel back. Our, our in-between travel times have remained the same of five minutes.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Abby.
So I've heard, um, talk circulating around the school and I'm sorry if I missed this during the presentation, but, um, the students that are being allowed back, is it similar to the elementary program, like the struggling students or is it just anybody?
We're taking all A and B.
Okay, thank you.
So all, all of the A students and all of the B students would be there five days a week.
Any questions, Pam?
I have a question. So you said that seventy-five students would be affected by the overcapacity and have to go to a buddy teacher. Does that mean every, like, how is that broken down by class? Is that per day seventy-five students or is that per period seventy-five students?
Higher four-period schedule, all the way through. If we were to bring all six hundred and forty-one kids, seventy-five through the four periods. If everyone was there, all six hundred and forty-one that day, which I would love to see, um, then we would be identifying seventy-five students. The teachers would be period by period. It breaks down to, I think, first period, we had fourteen, second period, there's twenty-three and twenty-seven. It gets, I had it all written out and I left it on my desk, but it breaks out each period. Uh, like I said, first period, I think there's either eleven or fourteen students, uh, that would have to go to a buddy teacher from their classroom.
And.
And it's not first come, first served. You know, if you're late to class, you're automatically that person picked. It's very much the teacher voice on who they identify can be most independent that day.
Also, um, so of all those, you have a buddy teacher near that class that can accommodate?
As close as we can, absolutely.
Okay. And also, if you have, if you are in a class where you need to keep speaking to the Zoom and to the teacher and stuff, how, how is that not disruptive to the other class? If they're in a class that's already being taught?
Yep. Um, the majority of the classrooms that we have, the majority of spaces that we have identified were classrooms that were either a recovery period or they were ones that were doing a remote class already so that it would make minimal disruption. And we're talking about, like I said, on average, one to three students. Um, we've already put in for, I don't want to beat up Mr. Hanson, but we've already requested about seven hundred sets of headphones, earbuds, whatever. So to try to minimize that noise so that they would be in a location that the receiving teacher would be able to identify in the back of the room. And it would be very much a model that we've seen in a learning lab where you have multiple students doing things. So wouldn't be, they wouldn't be involved with their receiving teacher's instruction. And we will work as hard as we can to try to make sure that there isn't a disruption. Um, in terms of speaking, there's still, if we're doing Zoom, there's still the opportunity to be able to, to type in questions. It's not the perfect answer. None of this is a perfect answer. But it does allow, technology allows us for this, the student and the teacher to still be able to communicate. And when there are those times, I'm, I'm sure that the classrooms can make arrangements for speaking back and forth with the Zoom. But the, having the ear, ear headphones or whatever the, the tool is, we, we're gonna order enough so that everyone would have their set. So we, that wouldn't become a barrier to why they could access their class somewhere else in the building.
But now the buddy class itself, will that be all kids that need to are?
Nope, nope.
Or would it be like a math class that's being taught and I have a science class and I'm, I'm?
It could be.
Capacity and I'm talking to that teacher and they're teaching over here?
Could be, or it may not be. There, there may not be, um, it, it, for many of those classes, they were classes that were already identified as a remote classroom. Not all of them, but many of them have been identified. So the teacher is teaching remotely for those other two hundred and sixty-five students. So it allows them to, to not be distracted by the instruction that's going on.
Okay. And now how will the, um, as we've actually going back to the teacher from AMS, I'm sorry, I forgot her name. Um, we talked about, um, social, emotional, mental health. You can have a student that is, um, and this is a question. You have a student that is, um, you know, attending all Zooms, is getting great grades, but is contemplating suicide. How do you know that? Like, how are you going to assess that and how will being in school help that student?
I think I could speak to that a little bit. I think, uh, when you have students in person, you know, say the class wraps up. You wrap up your instruction five minutes early or something. And that's, those are those moments that you connect with kids and you have those chats and those check-ins. Hey, how are you doing? Um, whereas if this, if the students on the Zoom, they turn off, you know, as soon as the class is over and you don't get those check-ins. So I think that it will, the more kids are in school, the more you notice, the more you have the chance to make those connections where you see those things.
Okay, thank you.
And very similar in the fashion that we always have is that teachers recognize that, families communicate that. Their friends are their best advocates to let us know if a crisis situation is developing. We utilize all of our resources and teams, whether it's guidance counselors, social workers, the administrators. Uh, the teachers are the greatest source and, and being around their friends who will recognize and that they've communicated with, those are all indicators. As well as the families reach out to us. So we've, we've always utilized those strategies. Are they perfect? Are they guaranteed? No. But those are the ones that we've done before. And having more access to those students allows for those opportunities to try to identify, um, those struggles that may not be as visible as we would like to, that, that we were talking about.
I just have one more question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And that's about the ventilation system. This was an issue I had in the beginning of the year too. And it was also brought up by a community member as well. Um, the ventilation system is, can it, um, accommodate having everybody in?
Yeah. So when we go all the way back to August and September, when, when that conversation came up, when, when the air circulation, uh, pneumatic specialists. I remember I brushed up on those notes, came in, they based that on, uh, having everybody in the building. And so at this point in time, we're talking about that six hundred and forty-one. And so the, the air circulation hasn't changed. It's continued to operate at its full capacity, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, instead of just during school hours. Uh, we've continued to provide all the maintenance all the way through as much as we possibly can. Fuses blow, we, we upgrade them, we put them in, we take care of that. Not my field of expertise. My job is to make sure that it keeps running. Uh, those things have happened. And the other place that is a, is a good consideration, it wasn't what led us to this place, but a good consideration is that we're moving our, we're moving into the warmer temperatures. So it allows for more windows to be open and, and we've had two fans in every single classroom venting air out as an enh- And we've had two fans in every single classroom venting air out as an enhancement, as another strategy to try to keep the air circulation going. All those things together put us on par with the air circulation in the other buildings.
And now, I know that we did the cohorts with the whole contact tracing. That was one of the biggest reasons we did cohorts. If, how is that going to work now if we do have a small outbreak? Or if there's a teacher and the kids have to quarantine, does the whole school have to shut down? Because before, we have had incidences where we've shut down an entire cohort. And we've maintained the other one keep going. How is that going to work if we have all the kids?
It would work very similar, except instead of having two distinct cohorts, we'd have an expanded cohort. So if a student was exposed in a classroom by another student, then that classroom itself becomes the cohort and not a hybrid A or a hybrid B. That entire classroom becomes the cohort.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate your coming and all your hard work on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
More slide for you on transportation. So certainly, this has been one of the areas that, oh yeah, what about transportation? Very critical, very important. So I know that in our steering committee, there's a group that meets while the different grade levels are meeting. The support services staff is also meeting. Adam is in that group as well. And spent some time in the last couple of meetings talking about this, but pulling this together today. So Adam, do you want to go over this for us?
Sure. Go through the bullet points, which pretty much sum up the transportation situation. So as we've discussed, we've been able to limit the capacity to one student per seat on our buses this year. And with the exception of siblings who are allowed to sit together. Once the students are identified, transportation is ready right now to start working out the detailed plans of what that's going to look like on each bus. Because obviously, it comes into play. Okay, that student, okay, does that student ride the bus? Okay, no, we don't have to worry about them, hope. You know, so each situation is unique. So they'll start working those. But just from preliminary, some preliminary looks that Billy and Sheila have done, we believe we can keep most, if not all, of the runs to the one student per seat by either shifting a few students to another run or doubling up on some of the short runs. Some of the in-town runs, which happen to be the ones with the most kids on the buses, it's easy enough to double those up if we have to. And even in the coldest of weather, we've kept some of the windows cracked open on the buses for ventilation. And as the warm weather is coming in, more and more of those windows are going to be opened up. So that's going to be another point in our favor. So we feel that the transportation will be able to accommodate the plans that have been brought forth tonight.
Adam, when you say double run, that for just for clarity purposes, that might mean I do a run, I drop the kiddos off, I've got to go get another group of kiddos, and I will be dropping them off 15, 20 minutes later than the original group? So it's like, almost like a staggered entrance into school?
That's exactly right, yes.
Okay. Any questions about transportation?
So like lunches, we discussed earlier, having to start at 9:30 because you have to accommodate space. Are these bus runs going to be super early for the earlier kids or later? Or is everybody going to get to school on time? And how is that going to look to get the kids to school on time?
So that I don't step out of my area where I know what I'm talking about. If Mr. Hunter is out there and would like to come in and address that question?
Those are all the questions, Pam, that we were asking as well, and Billy's really adept at that.
So will they get to school on time? The plan is yes. If we do have to double up on a run like Adam mentioned, we do have some buses that arrive to some of the schools early. Some of the bus runs are short, so they get there earlier than the bus runs, for instance, at North Auburn or whatever. So if we did have to go pick up some other kids, we would try to use those early-run buses to go pick up the other kids and get them to school on time the best we can.
Any other questions about transportation?
Theoretically, there could be absolutely no change to the number of kids going to school on a school bus. Because we don't know the data. It's because there's an open invitation going out, they might all say, no, I'm good.
That's a great point.
So we don't know the data. And when you get the data, then you'll probably be able to answer any of our questions.
We go by what we have currently, which is ever-changing. But with what we have to work with and going with the experience that we have from past years, even though this is a different year, we think we can handle most of that, yes.
Any other questions regarding transportation?
And I would only add, it would be another area, since three feet has come into the conversation, would be another area that would need to be reviewed and looked at. And at that point, we probably would need to look at the guidance again in transportation. And what we've used as a standard would likely change.
All right, thank you. Michelle, is there anything left on the reentry steering committee?
Not just that. I think Mr. Anier's quote tonight, not a perfect answer. There's one perfect answer, and we're working toward that. And that is getting all of our students back in full-time. That's really what the steering committee is working toward. Eventually, as we keep moving this and responding to this ever-changing criteria that particularly in March has been interesting things to respond to. So just wanted to remind us of that, that we understand that there are some things that are less than what we like them to be. But that we're moving toward that. And I do believe, as you can, I think you'll agree with me, that it's been a very thoughtful process that the educators that have been involved have entered into and been very open-minded in trying to address the needs of the students.
There's been a lot of work that's been done, so thank you for all that work to every member of the steering committee.
I just have one question, Michelle. The steering committee is comprised of all stakeholders. My question is, how many or what is the percentage of the entire committee that is for this plan? And how many are not?
So this has been a consensus process. This hasn't been a voting process. This has been a consensus process. So we worked to consensus. And that's why we've had several meetings to come to consensus about this. So there's not a vote, to answer your question, there's not a vote. It's to continue to work the plan until there's a plan that we can recommend. So everyone, no one has said that they're not in favor of the plan, Pam, who is on the steering committee.
So is your plan that basically what we had recommended, we wanted more in-person? So that was the goal. And how do you make that work? Is that what the steering committee was working at?
Yes.
So we, as a committee, I think, have been very vocal from the beginning that we want to maximize and continuously make sure that we are maximizing in-person learning. That we are responding to the criteria and the situations that are in front of us every, you know, every couple of months. And so I think that's been the goal. Michelle had that as your very first slide.
Yes.
Is to maximize that in-person learning, so.
And I really appreciated, what is the middle school principal's?
Mr. McGlaugh?
Mr. Griffin? Mr. Griffin. Mr. Griffin said how he likes to plan ahead. And he actually checked his school to see if he could have three feet. I appreciate that because I'm that kind of person that likes to look three steps ahead, what is going to happen. And I guess my question is, as you've stated, that things are changing, things are in flux. They're talking about three feet, six feet. So as a reentry committee, why have we not looked at what that could look like?
We have.
Strategic.
When you hear what Mr. Griffin said, all of the principals have done that same exercise.
Okay.
Measured and measured and measured, starting back in August, actually. So, and as different fluctuations in remote, as you heard Mr. Griffin say, looking at that again. So that's been a continual looking.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Michelle before she wraps up her presentation? Okay. Thank you very much, Michelle. All right, moving on. School committee student representative, report, sorry, I can't get that out of my mouth. Abby, do you have anything you would like to report on tonight?
I do not have anything to report on, but I would like to say that now that we're switching into the fourth quarter, there's a questionnaire type of Google form in the making for the food nutrition program, just asking about availability. Because now that we're switching over, classes are going to change. So it's probably going to be a few weeks after. So everyone is adjusted and comfortable with their schedule. And they are acknowledging when they are available. And obviously, more talk with Chris Piercy, but that's all I have.
Great, thank you so much. All right, superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. In the interest of time, I'm going to keep this brief, just a couple of things to get on your radar. The first is that we are planning for the EL graduation, and that date is June 5. There will be a public hearing on the proposed 21-22 budget on April 7. That's going to start at 6:00. That will be here. There's a memo in your packet from our adult ed director, Bill, and he's going to talk about adult ed graduation. And I already told you about canceling the March 31st budget meeting. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Can you give us just a little bit more information about what the EL graduation might look like? You have a date of June 5, but are there any talks about where that might be happening?
I believe Mr. Anier is looking at the airport again. And if we can, you've probably been following the guidelines, and it looks like it will be outside. The number of people is increasing. And I don't know if Scott is still here, if he's in the other room, if he wants to come and add to that.
He's coming.
I know the governor's most recent executive order, outdoor gatherings, as of May 24, it's 100%. So there's no restriction as of May 24.
From the airport's board, the airport is planning on five graduations.
Right.
Out there.
Okay.
Poland, Lewiston.
Okay. So Mr. Anier, repeat, beautiful repeat of?
You guys have done a marvelous job. So yes, we're tracking for June 5, Saturday, 6 o'clock. We've been in many conversations with our area schools. I think some of them have been quite interested in the model that we put together with Lewiston last year. That went very, very well. We've been in conversation with the airport already, even back in December, to start laying the foundation of what could that look like. Last, on March 3, the DOE came out with some very, from graduation-specific guidelines. And then after Friday, the 5th, when the governor changed some of the capacity orders, they pulled them back. So some of us did some investigating to go pull and find those old DOE ones, two days older, as a model of what we can do. So we are very much being mindful of what does capacity look like and what will those restrictions be? There will still be some things that will need to be in place. And so we're partnering up with Lewiston very, very much in terms of sharing resources and sharing planning strategies for the 5th. And so we are moving in that direction very much to be at the airport. The other schools are still trying to solidify their decisions, but Lewiston and EL are really continuing to move on that path. The logistics are still coming out. We're still trying to figure out where some of those outdoor capacities. And so if, for us, our $50,000 question is, what does outdoor capacity mean? So we're trying to get some definitions. I've been in conversation with Mark Goslin from the city to talk about some of their resources, as well as Matt Feitfield, to try to get some understanding of what indoor capacities and outdoor capacities look like. And that's going to become very beneficial for us for spring sports, as well as for any of our outdoor events that we have going on.
Thank you.
From the airport's standpoint, last year, it wasn't a concern for the airport because we were closed down during that time period. There is a concern with us because as an open airport, we have to run everything by the FAA. So that's why the plans were to try to solidify as quickly as possible. Because as I said, they're looking at five schools. So that is a lot of the day that the airport would be non-functioning. So that's why a lot of this was up in the air is because we were getting some feedback from the FAA as to what would be done and fees and things like that.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you for all your work on that.
Thanks, Carol.
All right. School committee chairperson's report. I just want to thank the members of the school committee for joining the Auburn School Department and myself at the joint meeting of the city council and school department meeting the other night. And just a thank you to, we've heard from a lot of community members, staff members. They've reached out to the school committee over these last few weeks. So we do appreciate hearing from you. And we're grateful that you've taken the time to share your thoughts and opinions with us around the reentry committee. And city council update, Mr. Carrier. I may have just touched on it a little bit there.
I mean, we were, for the most part, everybody was here, there at the meeting the other night. And I personally like having that meeting and having everybody present so that there's an understanding not only of what goes on in the school committee, but also what goes on on the council side of it. And sharing the fact that it's not, people understand that it's not just the school committee that's making sacrifices and looking very hard at the budgets. Part of that was the fact that, you know, they shared the fact that the city budget, they had to look at very seriously about staffing and things to make sure that we're going to make the budget this year and how we're going to do it. So I think that the more things that we do together only benefits us all.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Carrier. All right, school committee, sorry, committee reports. You have the Corin reported on the curriculum subcommittee the evening of March 3. So the meeting was on March 3. She reported on it March 3. And you have the minutes for the curriculum subcommittee. Building committee, you were done, we've approved that one. You have the entire PDF that the building committee was given and shown, as well as the design and the funding budget for that. So any questions on any of that? We've already signed the paperwork anyway, so at this point. All right, moving on. Yeah, we got a deal on it. I tried, see, I tried, Pam. Any other committees that need to report out right now? Yeah, Mr. Simpson?
It's not a report, but I was trying to get him before you went to Dr. Brown.
Oh, sorry.
Something, no, 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 it's fine. It's to build off what Abigail shared. I was hoping to see Will tonight. And I think at the point, we've recognized Will, that he was nominated for the Travis Roy Award, which is the highest esteemed recognition in the state of Maine for hockey players. And if you'll stay with me for a second, congratulations to the EL boys swim team and the girls. They came in second and third at the cave acts last week. For the boys, it's the highest they've ever done.
Absolutely.
And shout out to Andrew Casares, a sophomore at EL, who, he didn't break the school record, he destroyed it.
Destroyed, yes, he did.
Which is, I mean, it was an amazing thing. And I think if it's safe to invite these kids in so we can acknowledge them and their accomplishments appropriately. In the future. Thank you very much for letting me do that.
Thank you. I do have to report, and I'm sorry, I should have said this earlier during that time. Unfortunately, we have lost Will Cassidy as a student rep. When he applied as a student rep, it was, we were in yellow. Winter sports were not looking like they were going to be happening. Hockey, his hockey schedule took over, and now we've got spring sports are go. And Will is a baseball player, and so his schedule, there was a lot. I would say the email was quite in-depth as to why he needed to resign as a school committee rep. But he was very much looking forward to doing it. But unfortunately, his sports schedule just did not allow him to do that.
Speaking of recognitions, too, I just wanted to also touch on the great turnout that we had on Saturday for the vaccination of educators and school staff, 55 and older and above. St. Mary's did a great clinic over at Connors Elementary School in Lewiston. They would have loved to be able to vaccinate everybody, but unfortunately, they only received a certain amount of vaccine, so they had to go with the age constraints. But there was a great turnout, and it was wonderful to see staff members from all over Andrusgogon County coming and getting their vaccinations.
Do you know if they're going to be scheduling another one?
They are going to be scheduling another one because it was the Moderna vaccine, which is a two-part vaccine. But they weren't sure yet where they were going to have the space to do that. So they were going to, everyone's respective administrator is going to be notified of when the next clinic is, and they will tell them. And we'll continue there, and hopefully I'll volunteer then too.
Thank you so much for both of those things. All right, so at this point, can I adjourn a motion to accept the finance report for February 2021 as presented, please?
So?
Mr. Bell, now. I think I heard Mr. Carrier over here. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Motion passes, thank you. All right, old business. We are moving on to a few policies. Policy AC, which is policy AC, non-discrimination, equal opportunity, and? and affirmative action. Can I entertain a motion to approve Policy AC, please? So moved, thank you, Pam, and a second.
Second.
Oh, sorry, Dan, sorry to hear you. Thank you, Dan. All those in favor, any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, thank you. All right, moving now into the, yeah, I'm going to stick with it. All right, the, no, I won't do that. Okay, so moving into the reentry recommendations. So I am going to say that in hearing everything that was kind of discussed tonight, it sounded like three very different distinct plans that were happening. So I would like to entertain a motion to separate the recommendations from the reentry committee into three separate motions. One for the high school, one for the middle school, and one for pre-K 6. Would anyone like to move that motion for me?
A second.
Second.
All right, so I heard Pam over here, I heard Mr. Bellnapp over here. Okay, so the motion is on the table, so we can, questions, comments about breaking those three apart? All right, all in favor for breaking those three apart? Motion passes, none opposed. All right, so let's start, let's start with EL first. Can I entertain a motion to approve the recommendations of the reentry committee for a full five-day return for Edward Little High School?
So moved.
Thank you, Faith, can I have a second? Did I hear it over there?
Brian.
Second.
Brian, thank you. Okay, at this point, public comment on the EL reentry. Would anyone like to come in and speak to public comment? I don't know who is in the community room, who might like to come and speak on public, public comment for the reentry on EL, five days.
Oh, no.
No one there? Is there anyone here for anything else? Sure, Abby, go ahead.
So I wrote down a few things before coming here. I asked a few students, or I did a public opinion survey over social media. I wanted just to provide information for both sides, obviously, to cover both. So for the yes, just the points of making the education better and more available, I know that's everyone's main goal here for the school committee. It's more productive, better mental health for students. But some of the student comments that were leaning towards yes was to benefit the seniors. Obviously, there's parents who have seniors in the room tonight and they want their senior experience to return back to normal. Too many distractions at home for remote students is one of the concerns. COVID was not spreading as much within schools because of the younger generation. We have more of a tolerance, I guess. And then circling back to what Laura Garcia said a month or so ago, about the students that are in unstable households will benefit them returning to school more often. Then going to the no side of this topic, I wanted to comment and say that Lewiston did vote on this this past week and they said no to their proposal. So I just wanted to put that out there because we are neighboring and there was at one point where we wanted to merge into one. So just considering the fact that if they said no and we're going to say yes, it just seems a little conflicting. One of the other questions was how would contact tracing be handled, which was answered, so thank you. And then student comments was they have finally adjusted to the schedule and they said abandoning it now would disrupt everything that they've been working towards with adjustment. And then main concerns are students aren't vaccinated yet and not all of the teachers are vaccinated, so it feels a little unsafe. So just commenting on both sides, so it's just out there.
Thank you, Abigail. All right, so let's open it up now to comments. And I think, thinking about the high school, I think the easiest way to sort of be thinking about this is to just kind of whip around. If you have anything you'd like to add to the comment or to the discussion, I think that might be just to give everybody some air and some space. So it's one of these like, speak once, what are you thinking? And then kind of give that, give that vote. That makes sense? So does anyone want to open up the conversation? Go ahead, Mr. Bellnapp, ready?
Yeah, I mean, I think Scott and his staff have done a great job. You know, I think, you know, getting all the kids back at school has been our priority from day one. It should be our priority going even forward. You know, I think he, you know, they've looked at all the, you know, requirements, they're fitting the requirements, they're looking at, you know, again, how safe it can be. You know, I'm glad that, you know, they're able to bring everybody back and do it in a way that makes sense. Because now, again, we capture the, you know, the freshmen that we were talking about a few weeks ago that were failing, you know, we capture, you know, you know, it gives the seniors an opportunity. But again, I think, I think this is a great proposal. I think they did, you know, it's well-rounded and I, you know, I think I definitely support it, so.
Thank you. Anyone ready? Would you like to make their comment? Pam?
I agree. I think they did a wonderful job. I think they've really looked at all the aspects of what it's going to entail. I commend the staff at EL for really being versatile and really thinking outside the box and all the work that, you know, all the staff in Auburn has done throughout all of this pandemic. But, you know, the past week and a half, they've been really working on how this will work. And they've really done a great job. And I also, I really like the idea of having all the kids come back and not just some kids come back. I know we differ on our ideas of stigmatization and equitability, but I do appreciate the fact that they're all going back.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier?
I'll sort of parent everybody else's. I like the fact that we've looked at this and come to the conclusion that, you know, this is what we can do going forward, you know, hindsight, foresight, you know, if we would have known that then, what we know now. But I think it's a testament to the staff that they've figured out going forward what we can do and are trying to get all the kids back in.
Thank you. Ask Mr. Plessa?
Yeah, I definitely think the high school plan is, yeah, is very, you know, all the students. That's, that's kind of, I think that's the difference. And I think that's what we need to do.
Okay. Mr. Simpson or?
Yeah, I, Abigail, thank you for sharing what you did. That's helpful. It's helpful information to know, like the, you know, moment in time what the kids are feeling and thinking. So I appreciate you collecting that and sharing it with us. I like what Bob Griffin said. He likes to plan ahead. He's not thinking about, he's thinking about next week and what's going to happen next week. Because I, I think we all, if we follow the news, the CDC is going to change it to three feet. And what is that? It's going to happen. It's, I mean, it's, and I know we, and people in this community have been very judgmental of me. They don't know me. I'm about kids. I want these kids to get educated. That's, that's all I care about. And what happens when, next week, next Monday when they say three feet and we vote to say a small piece of, because I heard elementary and Bob say at three feet, we could do this. We could bring them all back. I dreaded this meeting all night because I have strong feelings about the cost that some of our kids have paid that, and I was talking to Michelle before this meeting, that, you know, when you look at the big picture of things, what has changed since August? The CDC guidelines haven't changed, the DOE guidelines haven't changed. In fact, what has changed is our positivity rate is probably four times that of August. So, you know, I respect, lessons learned, okay, that we've learned how to manage these things. I, and I say this in the interest of every kid in Auburn, Maine, they need to all come back to school. And I would almost say table a vote until it give the CDC. I just read three articles that Fauci and Jill Biden are engaging with this. So it's like, this is my, I appreciate the work people have done. This has been a very frustrating year for parents, for kids, for teachers, for administrators, and everybody's, everybody at the end of the day should feel good about their efforts, I believe. And completely off talking, I've got to do this, that the EL boys KVAC Nordic team won one, they're champions too, and Ellis Dover and Ben Fonda came in one and two. I've got to do that. Because that's, ultimately, they're, this is why I'm here. I think it's why we're all here, is for these kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Faith, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I couldn't agree with Dave more. I mean, everybody knows from day one, we need, my priority is getting kids back into school. And like Dave said, those CDC guidelines are, you know, we've done plan after plan. And I know the steering reentry committee has worked tirelessly and have made the best decisions they could. And I'm going to, I'm going to support this plan because it gets all the high school students back in school. But if it were up to me, all the kids would be coming back to school.
Right, right. Which is why we separated out the plan, so that we think we need to look at each, at each one. So I would just, I would echo everything that you have all said. People have been working tirelessly and hard. And to community members who are screaming that people need to get back to work five days a week, they are working five days a week, more than I have ever seen in all of my years of education. So I think this is a step in the right direction. To your point, Mr. Simpson, I'm a, I'm not a jump-all-in kind of person. I am a, you know, if we are inviting this many kids back now, and thinking just about the high school, for inviting this many kids back now, and maybe with three feet, people who want to come back, who have been remote, might want to come back as well. And so I think that, I think the high school has, has a good, is heading in the right direction. So with that being said, I think everyone has kind of said a little bit of their piece, I'm going to call for a vote at this time. So all those in favor of a, of the recommendation for the, from the reentry committee for a full five-day return for Edward Little High School, all those in favor? Seeing none opposed, that motion passes. Edward Little to return, I believe, April 5th, Michelle? All right, April 5th, full five-day return. Just note that if you've got April 5th, full five-day return, and there's some big changes going on at the high school as far as where these kids are going to be able to park, where staff is going to park, we've got construction trucks coming in, so perfect, beautiful storm about to happen there. And I am so, I am so sorry, yes, I am so sorry that this is colliding altogether. It just adds, it just adds to more of what needs to be done.
Chaos of collide.
Yeah, it just, it needs to add, more of what needs to be done. All right, so.
Can I just say one thing? I just want to piggyback on what Mr. Simpson has been saying about the accolades to all these amazing athletes. But I, Ben won the Travis Roy Award, which is phenomenal, but also Caroline Tracy, who is also a senior, is a finalist in the Becky Schaefer Hockey Award, which is an equivalent to that award for women. So I just wanted to put that out there, too.
Thank you, thank you. And I think this is important right now because it's about kids, right? This is kids-centered. This is about kids. This is why we're here. If you read your code of ethics, B talks about, I will at all times think of children first and base my decisions on how they will affect their education and their training. So this is children first here. All right, next one, let's go on to the middle school. Can I entertain a motion to approve the recommendations of the reentry committee as they apply to Auburn Middle School? Does somebody know we can't have a conversation, we can't have anything about it until we get a motion on the table?
So moved.
All right, so I'll take Brian Bellnapp and Pam. Any, no, any public comment about the middle school? There's no one in there, I don't believe.
Nope.
All right, seeing none, let's bring it to the school committee for discussion. So same thing, let's open it up to conversation about the middle school and their reentry plan.
Just a point of clarity, remote is still, remote, hybrid, and those three options are still status quo.
So.
With invitations to return to.
Right, so the remote is, it's the idea that those kids will probably still stay remote. We're entering into the fourth quarter, those kids will probably still stay remote. So then you've got the hybrid, but some of the kids from hybrid will be invited back five days. So all three options will be there. Any other comments?
I was, I have to say, I was very, very impressed with Mr. Griffin and his, his staff. I greatly appreciate the fact that he really has put a concentrated effort on the social emotional learning and the mental health. You know, I've talked about this before, you know, we all have been talking about mental health and, but I do think it's really important, and especially in this demographic. We all know middle school is not an easy time for anybody. And so I really, I kind of wish we could bring all the kids back. But I do appreciate the fact, as Mr. Simpson said, there's the hybrid plan, there's the full-time, and there's the full-remote. So you're kind of still able to catch all the kids. So I just want to say that I really appreciated his presentation. I thought it was, it was really thorough and very good.
Thank you. Anyone, Mr. Carrier?
I, I guess I'd like to see, I'm sort of like Faith, I'd like to see a full return. And I think that the people that are currently, and I think he said that it was 251? Somebody else? There were people that were remote. I think that if the need be and that the desire is there by the parents and the students, that they accept back as many kids as that they possibly can, with whatever utilization of space that we have to have. If that means utilizing the cafeteria and gymnasium for something other than that, then I think that we ought to do it. I think that, you know, for the people that want to be back, that they need to have the availability to come back.
I also, as Mr. Simpson said, there is a lot of moving parts right now with the CDC and the three feet and the six feet rule. And as he said, last, next week, it could change. So I know, I do feel like if there is a potential that we can get them all in, and if it's safe and that studies have shown that three feet is equal to six feet, then you wonder.
I think for me, this is almost like another stepping stone towards full return, towards everyone, towards full return. It's an opportunity to see what that looks like. It's an opportunity to see as an educator, just increasing class sizes again. So for me, it's a stepping stone because the ultimate goal, and I've said this, I have been very, very transparent about this, is that we're back five days. This gives us an opportunity to figure out what we're going to need to open these schools, five days for everyone. So that's sort of my piece in thinking, why not all right now?
I just had a follow-up question, and Michelle can answer it, or Dr. Brown. I guess, and I don't know if it was during the discussion tonight or whether I had heard it before, that there was a shortage of teachers at AMS?
Staff, if they spread the kids apart so that they can eat.
Is that more because people are calling out, or is the fact that it's just, we just don't have staff?
So I think, yeah, Mr. Simpson's right. It's a combination of both. And so when we have positions that we can't fill, and I think I've kept the committee updated on those vacancies, and then that's exacerbated by people who have to go into quarantine because they have been identified as a close contact. And between the two and a place like the middle school, you can impact a fairly large group quickly with those two factors. So it's both things.
Did we, and I guess the question begs itself, are we still having the same problem with not having an available amount of subs to, I mean, is that going to be a continue, I mean, I guess it's going to be a.
Statewide, nationwide.
Yeah, there are no subs.
There are none, no. All right. Would anyone else like to comment on the middle school? Dan, yeah?
So the middle school is going to do the hybrid and remote and full-time, all three?
Yep. So some kids will be invited back five days, right? That's what this plan allows for. Yep, some will stay hybrid and some, yep, I'm sorry, and some will stay fully remote.
So we were just talking about the quarantining and the lack of staff, or staff getting sick. Is bringing more kids in, is that going to create a bigger storm of more quarantine and more kids sick? Or is?
So I think it's important not to mix anonymous kids and sickness because we do have kids that go into quarantine who never become sick. So we do, by increasing the cohort size, there is a possibility that you will increase the number of students who are quarantined as part of that contact tracing.
And so then they will move to remote learning while they're in quarantine?
That's right.
Okay, okay. Any other comments about the middle school? All right, seeing none. Let's take a vote, please. All those in favor of approving the recommendations of the reentry committee as they apply to Auburn Middle School, all those in favor? All those in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion passes. All right, last but not least, can I entertain a motion to approve the recommendation of the reentry committee as they apply to grades pre-K, right? Is this correct, Michelle, pre-K? Pre-K through six, okay, can I entertain a motion, please?
So moved.
All right, I heard a lot. So Mr. Carrier over here, Pam, was that you over here? Okay, take Pam as a second. All right, any public comment on the elementary school? But I want to make sure I say it. No, thank you, Dr. Doris. All right, let's bring it back to the school committee for discussion on this point. Any que, any comments at this point? Mr. Carrier? Mr. Simpson?
I'll just go first. I, again, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna side with wanting to get the students back. I have a problem, and I, and I know that we say that there's, you know, they, they work together to make sure that there's no stigmatization to the kids and stuff. I just, you know, I, I don't see that fully coming through. If that were the case, then we wouldn't be seeing issues coming forward into the middle school and into the high school. So we know that they still exist. And I just think doing it this way will add something there that, that doesn't have to be. So in all honesty, I would be more inclined to want to see a return to five days with the elementary.
Anyone else comment, Mr. Simpson?
I was just, this is the hardest one for me to reconcile, just because I think, I believe, and I, and this is not a, I think they can bring them all, I think all these kids can come back. And what resonates for me is that number that in January was 25%, and today it could be 30 or 35%. And I think that, and I'm, I'm not an educator, but I think K through six is where kids learn their foundational skills. They don't get those in middle and high school. And we, I wish that we could have done this in January. And it's really, really difficult, because I do think they, I do think we can, we can, I think they need it almost more than the seniors, I really do. But that's just me. And, and the other thing, and it, that throughout this process, when I opened my notebook today, I opened to August 19th, and notes I took, and, and it brought me back. And, you know, for, for this, this is a polarizing topic in our community, and it has been. And a lot of people disagree with, with me. And I think it's a great opportunity for us to model, not only for the kids, but, I mean, if we could get a national platform to show people it's okay to disagree. And without, you know, going for the jugular, so to speak. So I, I think if I were to vote in favor of this tonight, I'm gonna enter, I'll probably text you in the next three days when they change it, to bring them back when they change it. Because I do believe it's really, really important for these kids to utilize the last eight weeks of school to, to pick up as much as they can. Thank you.
So I'm gonna piggyback on what you said. I have been asked the question, why now? Why now with only this, with, with what we have left for time? And I pushed back on that and said, why not now? If we can double the amount of time that some of these kiddos, I believe every moment in front of your teacher and with your, and with your peers is important. So I believe they do matter. And, and getting 459 kids back, the, if we approve this tonight, 459 kids back. But I will agree with you, Mr. Simpson, if guidelines change, and if we are looking at, at a shift, then I, you know, I think we need to reevaluate. But step one, I would like to see 459 kids get back versus denying the whole thing. That is, versus changing the motion, and, or versus not having any of them back at all.
And I agree with Karen, thank you. And my, I guess part of my logic is you could invite them all back, and you may not get 459 back. You know what I mean? So it's like that, it's kind of in a way the cart's in front of the horse, because we don't know the data. We don't know, I do know, I've talked to some parents, and they, and, you know, it doesn't matter what you guys decide, my kid's not going back.
Right.
You know, so it's like, we, if we had that data, I think we could make a more informed decision. But you, I agree with you.
Anyone else?
Well, then let me complicate things, because at this point, I'd like to amend my motion. I'd like to amend it that we return the K through six to five days a week.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, so there's.
Yeah, but they can't fit at this, at the, at this, the right, the guidelines that we're at now, at six feet. If they could fit, we would have had them all in.
They can if we go to three.
They what?
They can if we go to three. And we'll have to work out that.
So we'd have to change that to three.
Yeah. We still have to vote on, we still have to vote on this. This is not, I'm just making an amendment motion.
You still have to vote on the, he's got a second. So there's the conversation, you still have to vote on his amendment.
So, yeah, my, I, I guess my, I'm, I'm with you. I would, I would rather have them all in than just picking and choosing who's coming in. I have a, and I know that everybody's done a great job at talking about it, but I still, it's still a tangle for me, the stigma, stigmatization, the, I don't feel like it's an equitable plan, as far as it isn't fair to all the kids. I realize that some kids need more than others, and that that's what you're considering when you're talking about equity. But I just, you know, you're talking about one kid in one family might be able to go, and then two, then two siblings stay home. And it's just creating a dynamic that is a negative dynamic that is just going to further traumatize and stigmatize these children, and that's my fear. But I do, I mean, if it was changed to three, but then my question to you is, what about lunches now? Because they still have to be six feet apart to eat. Whether that's changed to three feet or not, we still have, and can that be accommodated?
I don't think it can be. I think from what we heard tonight, that's what was holding, that was, that's what was holding back. That's the challenge right there, is feeding, or lunches need to start at 9:00 AM and, and go a long way. So at this point, what I'm gonna do is call for a motion, to call for a vote on the amendment to the motion for five days. So all those in favor for the amendment to the motion to bring kids back five days a week? All those in favor? One, two, three, motion does not pass. Okay, so we're back to the original motion, which was to approve the recommendations of the reentry committee as they apply to pre-K through six. So at this point, I'm going to call for any, or further discussion, I want to make sure you wrap it up.
Can I ask who made that motion?
Who made the motion? Mr. Carrier?
I made the original motion, and I also made the amended motion.
I just want to say, the reason I didn't agree with that is because there's no plan. You know, it's just, let's bring them in, but there's nothing that has been set in stone as far as how are we gonna do this? So I think if, and I know it's not my lane to be dictating how it's done, but I would also, as you all know, I like to ask a lot of questions. And my question is, how would this be done? How would they eat?
So if next Monday they move to three feet, are we gonna wait until the middle of April?
No, I agree.
I can't, we don't have a crystal ball. We've got to deal with what we've got right now in front of us. And right now in front of us are the guidelines that we have in front of us. Those haven't changed right now at nine, whatever time it is right now. So, yes, I realize, next week, right, I know. So next week, something could be, something could be different, but we've got to deal with what's in front of us right now.
Can we make a motion that they go back, and then if they change the CDC to three feet, then we can move on to that? Is that, is that, is that something?
Well, that would have to, that would have to come back as an amended motion to the original.
Right.
And.
Based on new information.
Based on new information.
Yeah, and then, then I guess we could take another vote. If they did change it, then we could official, you know, officially take a vote for that.
So Dan, you could amend the motion that's on the table right now to revise it to say that should the CD guidelines change to three feet, that all students would return five days a week effective, pick a day, pick April, what's the date, Michelle? April 5th?
April 5th.
The first of the quarter.
Or whatever date they would, yeah, April 5th would be the earliest.
Well, the, I'm talking out of turn.
Go ahead, absolutely. I'm looking right at you, go ahead.
The only thing that would have to change is the fact that the six-foot would have to change for lunch. Because we already know that we can do three-foot in the classroom.
Yes, yes.
So the only thing that would have to change is, we could say that, and I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Yeah, no.
But make this, make an amendment to the motion that say that should the CDC rules change, lowering the standard for lunches to three-foot, then we would move the schools back automatically to full participation.
But is the CDC making that rule, or is that the DOE on the lunch pot?
Federal CDC, the federal CDC is studying it now.
And then the DOE would have to adopt those guidelines.
It's hard to find that information sometimes.
CDC, national CDC has to make the decision, main DOE needs to accept those guidelines.
Yeah, so I'd like to make that amendment.
Well, question, that, that how are the other schools doing it?
Right. So they are eating six feet apart.
They're all, they're all, Lisbon and, and all the other schools are all six feet apart?
They are eating six feet apart. They accepted federal monies when they signed on the dotted line, they are eating six feet apart. They are. I, I called probably, called or emailed probably eight different people in eight different districts today. Yes, Abby?
So just to clarify, the hypothetical three-feet change, if it were to happen next week or sometime, for the elementary school, it would be the three-feet. But for like Edward Little, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was, we are okay to, A cohort and B cohort to return while staying six feet. So would that three-feet rule be in effect for all schools regardless, just so everyone's on the same page? Or just elementary to get everybody back in?
I don't think it would affect you because you're coming in five days a week. So you could then, instead of having to stay six feet apart from your friends while you're eating, you could actually go three feet apart, would feel like a typical day in, at school having lunch, I believe. Does that make sense? Maybe you can eat in the cafeteria, Abby, I don't, I don't know. Okay, so I'm a little lost at this point. Um, we had the original motion. Dan, you want to amend the motion to say that, so the, the motion is to approve the recommendation of the reentry committee as they apply to grades pre-K through six with an amendment that should the, I guess we should call them DOE guidelines? DOE guidelines or CDC guidelines? What do we have to go by?
Guidelines currently say three to six feet.
For lunch, too?
No.
No.
Just for, right, so if you're talking about just lunch.
Because if they're saying three to six on everything else, we're good, but it's the lunch specifically.
And they eat in their class, they, they're, right now, they're eating in class, so they're six feet apart, so that's why they.
The only thing that we need to worry about is changing the guidelines for the.
For the lunch.
And how are we gonna do that? Like, I know that there's talk about the, the, the changing distance of three to six, but has that also encompassed eating three feet apart?
I don't know.
As opposed to six feet? That's, that's the problem.
They can, if they can sit three feet apart in a classroom, and then they can eat three feet apart.
Well, no, because their masks are off.
Yeah, their masks are off, they have to, if their masks are off, they have to be six feet apart when they're eating, that's.
Yes, they can sit with their mask on.
If they're changing, then that's what we.
But we don't know if they're changing that.
We don't. So what we're saying, Dan is making the proposal, however, should those, should the mandates or the guidelines, or whichever you want to call them, around the eating for, or the CDC guidelines, DOE guidelines, change to three feet, then we would support the full reentry of pre-K through six.
Yeah, second though.
And Brian, Brian Carrier is seconding the amendment. So now I'm gonna ask for a vote, all those in favor?
I have a question, though, I'm sorry, to make more confusing. I know, I have a question. When you make this amendment.
I almost got it in.
I know. Sorry. When you make this amendment, are you saying that we agree with what has been given to us today as putting in the kids that are, like, just the kids that are chosen? And then if it changes, we have them all?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. I, I was, yeah, so, but we didn't even decide if we want that or not.
That's right.
That first motion.
We can't, because he amended it. We can't vote on that yet, because Dan amended it. So now that there's an amendment there, now we've got to vote on his amendment, and.
Vote on the overall.
Then we vote everything in.
Okay.
I took a test in Robert's rules. Mr. Simpson?
No, I, I let you know, I have a.
Oh, Abby, sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah. So just to throw it out there, double masking is now a thing. I feel that if we do move to three feet, it should be recommended. But I know that the guidelines say within three to six, so obviously it would be okay. But I just feel like double masking would be, should be recommended, not forced, but should be an idea thought about closely or more.
We've been pretty diligent to the guidelines that are passed down to us. So if that's one of them that comes with, you know, any changes to the spacing, then we will, we're not going to break any rules and laws here.
I feel like, I feel like that should be two motions. I mean, I know he amended it, I know there's an amendment, but I feel that.
I have to do, we've got to, we've got to do this one right now.
We're gonna vote on the other one after Pam.
Yeah.
We're still gonna vote on two.
We're gonna come back to that in a minute.
This is just for his amendment, and then we vote on the overall.
Yeah, we're gonna vote on the.
But his amendment says that we are voting for this, the, for having just certain kids come in. The what's, what's presented today, is this, is this what we're voting on?
No.
What's presented today, as well as the amendment to change it if the rules change?
So we're voting on all students pre-K through six? No, we're voting on all kids pre-K through six coming back full-time if the CDC DOE guidelines for eating lunch within three feet come into effect. And then we're gonna vote on what they presented.
Then we vote on the bigger one that says yes or no.
Okay, so right now, we're gonna vote on the amendment. Hands and feet side of the ride at all times, we vote, all right. So we're gonna vote on the amendment that Dan just.
No, Dave's got a question.
Is that a question you're voting?
Is that a question you're voting?
I'm gonna make an amendment to Dan to say no sooner than April 5th for a full return if there's a change in the CDC guidelines.
That's what he said.
Yeah, April.
Oh, is that in the, okay, didn't know that.
I'm like, oh my God, isn't that what he said?
No, I just didn't want this to be.
All right, so all those in favor of Dan's amendment, seeing none opposed, that amendment passes. So now, we have just added on, just kind of tacked it in there.
Thank you.
All right, so now, we're gonna go back to the original. Now, Reeve, you've been taking copious notes here. So Reeback, this next, this next one we're gonna vote on.
So it's a move to approve the pre-K through six reentry recommendations.
Absolutely, as now, as proposed. As amended.
Students would return five days a week if the CDC guidelines change to three feet for lunches, no sooner than April 5th.
Okay?
Okay.
Ready?
That's the amended.
Just, just.
No, that's, that's.
That's the motion.
The motion now.
That's the amended motion.
Recommendation.
That's the motion.
Point of order, I just, it's, didn't we just decide it was CDC slash DOE? Because we, we said that it was the DOE that we're following, because they give us the money.
Well, to Mr. Carrier's point, we do have an MOA with the Teachers Association that does refer to the MDOEs guidelines, six of them. So that would be the sort of guideline that we'd have to follow.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, all those in favor?
Wait a minute, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm so confused right now.
Okay, so.
I just don't want to vote on the wrong thing.
Right, so what's happening now, Pam, is that we're about, we've already done the amendment, that is all done. So now, we are voting to, step one, bring 459 kids back.
The struggling kids.
Yes, those 459 high-support kids.
Okay.
If, when the DOE guidelines change to, down to three feet, all of them can come back in.
Then I'd like to make an amendment that we, because we may not.
No, you have to, like, make your amendment, then we have to have the discussion.
I'd like to make an amendment that we vote on whether or not we want ki, um, high-needs kids coming back first. And then we can also make vote on bringing them all back in if the CDC changes its rules to three feet.
Can you say that again, just so I can.
So I'd like to make an amendment that we vote as it was, as far as the plan that was presented to us from the reentry, which is just bringing back the struggling kids and not all the kids. And then if, we vote on that, yes or no, and then we. and not all the kids. And then if we vote on that, yes or no, and then we should also have that plan of, of if, oh my God.
I don't try to follow him. Try.
If the CDC changes its rules and we can have three feet, then we can bring all the kids back.
But you voted on that.
We already voted, we already did that.
Yes, we did vote on that. But you're lumping it in with the bringing them in, just bringing in a certain amount of kids now.
Step one. And then if the CDC DOE guidelines change, then it becomes all of them.
Right. I guess what I-
They're together. That's the motion now. That's the motion. That's here now.
You can-
You can choose to vote no.
Well, no, because I'm, I'm torn. I, I honestly, I'll, I'll be transparent. I would, I was going to vote no. The elementary plan of bringing only a certain amount of kids in, because I don't feel like it's an equitable plan. I think it will stigmatize kids. That's my belief. That's from, also from constituents who have, I've spoken to, that's their belief as well. But I would vote if that, if the guidelines change and they go to three feet and we can bring all the kids back, and that way we're not picking and choosing, there's no stigmatization, everyone's getting a chance to come back, then I would vote yes on that. So that's where my confusion is.
Okay. So that, but that's not the way the motion is right now. The motion is bring back the 459. And if guidelines change, then all of them. So that's, that's the motion right now.
And can we change that?
You can ask.
To just vote on two different things?
Do that, right? If, if I rescind, right?
Yes.
No, you, you-
No, yours went through.
Has been voted in and passed.
Technically, you can do another amendment, but at this point, in all honesty, it would be voting it up or down. It would be the way to go. But we can, you can add another amendment. And then we have to, it has to have a second. And then we have to vote on that part of the amendment. And then we have to come back. We're still going to have to vote on the overall amendment that we're bringing-
Still have to vote on this one. It's still here.
X number of people back now. So you can make your amendment for the-
Because I feel like they're two different things. They're two different motions in a way. Because you're bringing your, what?
It's, it's the same thing as you just voted on for AMS, though.
For what?
For Auburn Middle School. You voted back and, and I'm- No, no, I'm saying about picking just a certain number of kids that are identified as struggling. Correct?
Well, there are three options for the middle school. There are only two for the elementary. Right, Michelle?
Yes.
No, there are three. We, all our students have to come to school. So if they don't come full time, they either have to take remote option or, or a, or come in on the cohorts. That's the, the three options. It's the high school that has two options because it's all in or it's out.
My point was just that if the Auburn Middle School only takes back a certain number of children, it's the same method, but you know, they're going to identify which kids come back if they're not all coming back. Correct?
The majority of them are coming back, though. It's not just three here, two here.
Maybe. We don't know that.
Can I?
Yes, Mr. Bellup.
So I just want to make a comment and then an argument against Pam for a minute. So my comment is, I think, I think the elementary staff, teachers, did an amazing job coming up with legitimate criteria to bring back students that, I don't like the word struggling. They're, it's an opportunity to, to argue against you, Pam. I think we're being more inequitable keeping these kids at home and doing nothing. I'll be honest. I can look myself in the mirror and go, you know, if, if we're, if we're going to deem these kids because we're bringing them back as inequity, for me, I can, I can handle that. For me, I can't handle doing nothing. You know, I think at 27 to 30% of struggling kids, if we do nothing, I, I think that's worse than if we give these kids an opportunity. We give these parents an option, an opportunity. Is it the right stepping stone? Yeah, it's a stepping stone. I like the amendment that Dan made. I would love to see all these kids back. I'd love to see the CDC DOE change to three feet. That's why I voted for all kids in, all kids. I'd love to see all kids go back, middle school, high school, and elementary. But again, it goes back to, I think we're being more inequitable keeping these kids at home and knowing that we're keeping them home than to give them an opportunity to bring them back.
459 kids is a lot of kids.
459 kids that are in, that meet some criteria, which I, again, I think the criteria is fantastic. I mean, it, it's not based on star scores. It's not based on, you know, a one or two. It's based on a, on a great selection of criteria that, that the staff and administrators put together as an opportunity to identify the kids that they feel would deserve extra help, extra need, extra support, whatever it might be. Whether it's school-based, whether it's emotional needs, whether it's, you know, whatever it might be. So I, I actually really, you know, acknowledge the fact that they spent as much time to really come up with great criteria.
I think this is what, to piggyback on what you've said too, Brian, this is what they're gearing up for, these 459 kids. I think that's what they're gearing up for.
It's right. So let's, when she, she did a nice job with the presentation, I kept thinking of the word engagement. Not failing, not this. It's like kids that we would like the opportunity to improve our engagement with. I was going to shout it out to her, but I didn't.
I don't think, I, I have, I just want to comment. I don't think voting no against this is doing nothing. Because I think that a lot of these teachers have done a phenomenal amount of work, and they still do, that even if kids are coming in two days a week, they are providing things that they need. And to say that if they come in two more days a week, that they're going to get, and I, I get it, they're going to get more one-on-one, but I'm, I'm sorry, I don't think it's doing nothing.
So it doubles, it doubles their opportunity to be in school, from my mouth. All right. So let's take a vote on the motion with the amendment. And Dr. Brown, could you read it one more time, please?
So this is a move to approve the recommendations of the reentry committee for pre-K through grade six, as amended by Dan Passan. And that is that all kids would return five days a week if the CDC slash MDOE guidelines change to three feet for lunches no sooner than April 5th.
Okay. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. Any opposed? Pam, and one opposed, sorry. Motion passes. Thank you for that long conversation. I appreciate hearing all of your thoughts on that one. All right. Moving down to policies. We're going to, under new business policy, AC dash R, the grievance procedure for persons with disabilities. Can I entertain a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Uh, sorry, Mr. Bellup. Thank you. Pam, I'll take your second. Any questions or comments on that one? Saying none, can I have a vote, please? All those in favor? Thank you. Motion passes. All right. The school year calendar. Dr. Brown, can you walk us through the 21-22 school year calendar?
Sure. This is a first reading for the 21-22 calendar. This is the product of the area superintendents looking at the calendar for the Lewiston Regional, Lewiston Regional Technical Center, because we can have no more than five dissimilar days. So as you can see, there's a legend that will tell you when the kids would begin. That would be September 1. And we'd start with two teacher workshop days in August. We would go through until June 14, June 15. I did survey the staff and I asked them how the remote days are going. And I got a great response. And what I'd recommend to you is that we would use three days for traditional snow days. And anything after that would become remote days. So those would be built into the calendar. So the last-
We're going back to snow days.
Three.
For three. So it was sort of, the consensus was, I got a lot of feedback for both, for both, for remote as well as for traditional snow days. And so that was sort of the, the middle ground. The people said, how about some of both? And so that's what I'm proposing. The first three, and this would, I think, help families as opposed to, was it a remote day? Is it a snow day? So the first three will always be a traditional snow day and have to be made up. And then the next days, regardless of how many there are, would be remote days.
Okay. So that prevents pushing sometimes school all the way until June into the 20s?
Yes, it does.
Okay. All right.
I think that's a great plan. Thank you.
All right. Okay. So can I entertain a motion? Let me find that page. Entertain a motion to approve.
Dan's question.
Oh, Dan, sorry.
Yeah. Did Lewiston, didn't they just add two holidays to theirs?
Yes. They added one that I'm aware of. I don't know of a second one that they've added.
Two on the news.
I, I don't know. I know they-
I didn't know. Did we add, did we add them too? And?
No.
No, okay.
Those are one of the five dissimilar days that we, that I mentioned a minute ago. I think it's Ed that they added. And I don't know, I don't know if there's a second one. I'm sure that there is.
Interesting. Thank you, Dan. Okay.
Have we looked into adding more inclusive holidays at all?
Uh, my goal was to try to match the calendars of the other area school districts. And the more holidays that you step out to, to change, the more dissimilar days you have. So you have to try to make those up some other place.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So can I entertain a motion to approve the proposed school calendar, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson.
Second.
I think we just had discussion on a little bit. So let's call for a vote. All those in favor? Seven of those opposed. Mr. Carrier opposes. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Was that the last thing on this agenda this evening? Upcoming meetings next week, March 24th is a full budget workshop and school committee discussion. And the March 31st meeting has been canceled. I don't believe we will need that one. All right. Future agenda items or requests for information at this time?
I, I have, sorry.
Go ahead. No.
Okay. Um, as we did an amendment for the middle, the, the elementary school, and I know this is totally out of order and totally not Rogers' rules at all, just for the next, maybe the next agenda or whatever, if we do get word that we go to a three-foot rule, I would propose that we would also look at the middle school and bringing back all of those kids as well.
Okay. Thank you, Pam. All right. Any other requests for information? Mr. Carrier?
The, I know I'm sort of nitpicking at this point. One of the questions that I'd ask about the unfunded positions, no, let me rephrase that. Funded unfilled positions. And I was wondering what the cost, what the overall cost would be for those. You know what I'm trying to say? I'm not doing it very well, am I?
No. We're all looking at you very confused right now.
I'd like to know how much we would spend-
Bring them back?
No. They're funded already. I want to know how much of that is funded. I know it's 100%, but-
So if I took those positions out, what's the value of those positions?
Yes.
Okay.
You knew.
Good thing she reminds.
All right. Any other requests for information? All right. Saying none, can I entertain a motion to adjourn, please? Thank you, Mr. Bellup. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? I'm not even looking up. Motion passes. Meeting adjourned 8:59 PM. Thank you all for the conversation this evening.